Good evening. I'd like to call to order this, the regular town council meeting for Tuesday, January 18th, 2022. Please rise for a moment of silence. We'll have the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic from which it stands, on the nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Allenson.
Here.
Carmody.
Here.
Fishmine.
Here.
Laffin.
Here.
Marone.
Here.
Tada.
Here.
Testa.
And Chairman Servoni.
Here.
All right. Can I have a motion on the consent agenda, please?
Mr. Chairman, Consent Agenda Item O has been removed, but I motion that we approve and accept Consent Agenda Items A through N and P.
Seconded.
Moved and seconded. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none. We had, I think, two appointments on the consent agenda. First was Mr. Conroy to fill a vacancy on the zoning board of appeals. Mr. Conroy, if you're here, I see you. If you want to come forward, we can get you sworn in. And then, Mr. Chapel, are you here? You can come forward, too. Approach the clerk. She'll take your oath. You get sworn in. Congratulations to both of you, and thank you for your service. Item four, there are no items removed for discussion from the consent agenda. Item O was withdrawn. Moving on to the public question and answer period. My apologies. I didn't recognize you from your new perch and...
Yes. Well, no, that's where I've been sitting because many people in here unfortunately aren't wearing masks. And we have a thing called COVID going on. And it is highly contagious, but that's okay, Mr. Mayor, right? I have a... Bob Gross, Long Hill Road.
Thank you.
Sorry about that. I have a question through the chair to the mayor.
Go ahead.
I'm just wondering how the... Can you give me an update or give us an update of what's going on with the parking lots on the Wooding Kaplan property?
I'd have to check with engineering. I don't have anything right now.
Well, you, the way you left it was that you were going back out to bid. Have you?
I don't know if it has or it hasn't. You're correct. It's supposed to go out to bid, but obviously it would not be something that anyone could start in February or probably even March because of the weather. So it probably would be later, but I don't have current information on it.
But you, as you mentioned last year, you want to get the bids in to lock in the price. The more you wait, the tougher it's going to be. Oil's ADL.
I thank you. I thank you for your advice.
Well, it's just that you went ahead and paid, you said to the counselors last year that you would do them all together. You didn't. You paved the private lot that doesn't belong to the town, and yet you haven't touched the lot that belongs to the citizens of Wallingford. You haven't touched that lot.
Well, as you're well aware, I do not regard the paving that was done being the paving of private property that is public property, subject to a lease, which makes it public for the term of the lease. So we obviously have areas of disagreement on this subject.
And most people would have a disagreement because if it's, even though it's a lease, it still belongs to the person who owns the property. Thank you.
Mr. Cumberford? I'm sorry. I didn't see your hand. Mr. Cumberford, Ms. Sella was approaching the mic. Would you like to yield to me?
I just want to make sure that for item five of the...
Name an address for the record, please.
Oh, I'm sorry. My name's Alita Sella. I'm Chair of the Wallingford DTC 241 North Whittlesey Ave Extension. And I just would want to confirm that we have public and answer to the question period now, but during item number six, are we going to be able to have public comment as well?
Under the council rules, there's public comment on all agenda items.
Thank you so much.
Mr. Cumberford, thank you for your patience.
Bill Cumberford, 5 Broadview Drive. Real quick, Mayor, going circling back to Mr. Gross's question. Can you enlighten us about the MPP that the union filed about the paving for that lot?
Enlighten you with regard to the union? What?
Didn't they notify that you or the town that they were going to potentially file a grievance because they didn't authorize that project to go out to bid? You're not familiar with that?
I am familiar with that intention. I don't believe it's progressed at all.
That's because, in my opinion, that because it didn't move forward, that caused pause. But now that you just stated to Mr. Gross that it's going to go back out to bid, wouldn't that come back into play?
It's possible.
Okay. Another thing. Mr. Gross, I think, and I could be, I could be wrong, but I think that he asked about a grant administrator. We had one. And, correct me if I'm wrong, you said we do have one, and her name was Susan or Sue Shaw. Is that who the grant administrator is?
She fills that subject matter of work, yes.
So she is the grant administrator. You write the classified service based upon the charter. You write the actual job description. You approve it. So is she the grant administrator?
She functions in that capacity for the town.
So is that a yes or a no?
I said, she functions in that capacity for the town. I can't sit here right now and say exactly what her job title is, but she deals with the grants.
Okay. So what I have here is actually the job description that was never approved by the town council. And it says, position title, Grant Administrative Secretary. That's her job title. She doesn't say grant administrator. It says, Grant Administrator Secretary. Am I wrong?
As I stated, I cannot tell you exactly what the title is. Is that the title? Then that is the title. But I know she deals with our grants. She is the one who handles all the grants with regard to the housing authority projects. She handles the grants with regard to the LoCIP and Town Aid Road, issues with DOT, and a multitude of others. It's a challenge grant. She's handling all of that activity.
And I'm not saying that she doesn't, but it sounds to me like it's kind of demeaning or you've got somebody actually doing that job. This job was never, never accepted and voted on at the town council, although on the bottom of it says, approved by the town council, March 28, 2017. So I got the minutes from the town clerk. It was on the consent agenda. It was never voted on. It was never brought up because I would imagine our esteemed town council would have said, hey, why do we need a secretary when we've never filled up Don Rose's job, which is the, is the grant administrator? And my point is, tonight you're going, you've got another economic and community development coming up in front of you, and they're going to be talking about the grant. But we don't have a grant administrator. We have a grant secretary, which kind of leaves things in limbo because technically that's not her job. And my final thing is, is I'm guessing maybe seven or eight years ago, I came to a town council meeting, and I asked about if anybody else saw the condition of the town ceiling. And then about, call me Nostradamus, 15 minutes later, the ceiling let loose and it dumped on your desk. Pretty embarrassing. Now, as I stand here today and I look up at that mess of a beam that looks like it's potentially deteriorating, what's going on with that?
I can't tell you right now because I haven't had the opportunity to talk with Public Works. Certainly, they are aware of the needs of this building, and I can't tell you right now what their plans are.
And how long has that been like that?
I don't know. I haven't been timing it.
Okay. So in my final note, you're talking about potentially applying for a grant that potentially is going to involve the railroad station. What about taking care of our own mayor's house, which is what you see in every, every floor around here has all water damage on? Thank you.
Name an address for the record, please.
Debbie Gross, Long Hill Road. I just have a request for the council and the mayor. If you could, at the next council meeting, provide us with an update on the engineering department and what's going on with the Wooding Kaplan parking lot. That would be great.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Come on over.
She's shorter than me. Bob Gross, Long Hill Road. Through the chair to the mayor.
Go ahead.
It's been a few months now since I asked about the police, well, it's been many months now since the council had asked the police department about using Facebook. You said no. You said you were going to put it on to the website. Has it happened in these three to four months?
I'm sorry. I couldn't understand what you're referring regarding the police. What?
Police to have a presence on your website to put post bulletins, like almost every other town has a presence on either Instagram or Facebook, to announce snow bans and to snow parking bans, or to announce accidents, and to lock your cars and where there were, you know, where there were catalytic converters stolen and so forth like that. You said that you were working with the town and the police department about getting that posted. It's been multiple months now. I mean, how long does it take to put it on the website? Or is it on there?
We are working with Web Solutions. It's a company that handles the current website, and they will be redesigning and updating and providing the vehicle for communication that you're talking about on the town's current website.
So do you expect that in 2022 or 2023?
I don't have a timetable on it, but I was led to believe it would not be an inordinately long period of time, so it should be within this fiscal year.
So by June 30th? Just so you know, that's outrageous for it to post anything on a website. They, Web Solutions has access to the website. To post something or to set up a page or pages would take all of a few minutes. And to design it is a few more minutes. And they could take the police emblem or the town of Wallingford emblem and put it on there and post the information. How this is taking so long, Mr. Mayor, is crazy. Thank you.
I actually just wanted to bring up what he, oh, I'm Whitney Mooney, 28 South Elm Street.
Thank you.
Sorry, new to this. So I actually emailed Chairman Servoni about this earlier this week, but I am a little concerned about how often the website is updated because, as you guys have probably received a lot of emails this week about the things that are happening on the agenda tonight, it was hard to find some of the new councilor's emails. And I think that's like a big barrier for people to get engaged in like local politics if I can't find Autumn or Sam's email on the website. So I'm just like wondering if there's like any chance that we could like move a little faster on website updates in those terms, just, just to help the community get involved.
So in, I know Deb, our town clerk, had responded to your email, and part of the website had been updated. The elected officials are listed in two places, and one place was updated, the other place hadn't been. It was an oversight, so we're on it. And we also, at the beginning of every term, accumulate the contact or the desired contact information for each counselor, and that'll be posted shortly.
Awesome. Thank you very much.
Sure. Anyone else before Mr. Gross? Mr. Gross?
Bob Gross, Long Hill Road. The, I'm sure you saw in the paper the other day, North Haven is doing a distribution of these masks through the mail. Through the chair to the mayor. Have you spent any AARP money, ARPA money yet? Probably not, except for the consultant. But if you haven't, wouldn't it be a wise decision to send these masks to everybody in town instead of, because there's many elderly that can't wait in these lines to get these masks. And in the situation we're in now, where it's highly contagious, and most towns around us have in-town mask requirements, we're the only town around here that doesn't. Do you think that's a possibility to send the masks out via mail?
At the point, we receive additional masks and kits. That certainly is something we will be considering.
Well, kits you don't have to send out, as everybody's probably aware now, kits from the federal government are available. You can go to their website today or now and order them. It's very easy to do, and they'll send you, I don't know, it's four or six kits per house to start with. So that's easy. Masks are the harder part, and masks are the thing that can keeps the virus from down. Why you don't have a mask mandate in town here, I'm very surprised at because in your speech that you made when you were, did the thing a couple of weeks ago, one of the things you said is you're here for the safety of the citizens of Wallingford. And one of the safety items in today's world is a mask. And I see many people here without a mask, and it's very disrespectful to other people. Thank you.
I just want to remind everyone, we are following the state guidelines on this. When you try to enforce, when you try to enforce masks, there's almost no way to enforce it. You won't be arresting people with the police. If a private property owner requires it, they can enforce it. You're not allowed to be in their building. But to enforce masks, which is why I believe, at least part of why the state does not require it, it becomes a very difficult proposition.
All the other towns around us, Mr. Mayor, are doing it. Yes, you might have the person, the person here or there who doesn't wear the mask, but if the majority of people are wearing masks, it stops the spread as fast as it's going around. And I find it very disrespectful. Thank you.
Anyone else for public question and answer? If you want to comment, you have to approach the mic. I'm sorry.
I just wanted to say I have masks in my purse. If anybody needs them, they're all wrapped up, and they're pretty jazzy. I mean, look at me. So in case you want one.
All right. With that, we will close the public question and answer period, and we will move on to item six, which is discussion and possible action to fill a town council vacancy. Due to the resignation of Gina Morganstein, we do have Counselor Morganstein's letter, which was delivered to us on January 7th, and there is a vacancy. Counselor Testa.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I expect this will be a lengthy discussion this evening. I'd like to cover a couple of, couple of things. First of all, it's clear that there, our town charter is, is pretty simple about how this situation should be handled, and that is that the town council is charged with the responsibility of appointing a replacement for any opening on the town council, for whatever reason. And the only conditions that are specified are that the, the person chosen be of the same political affiliation of, of the person who left the seat. So we can all acknowledge that those are the only official guidelines that we can say apply. After that, it's really a matter of protocols, courtesies, however you want to look at this. And as you know, not too long ago, we had some appointments come up here, and I, I was pretty vocal, and I have been vocal in the past, about following what I guess we would call tradition, precedence that has been established over many, many years. And that is that when there is an opening that requires a council to, to appoint somebody, we typically will look to the respective local representative party committee of that party and ask for a nomination. And I think that goes back to the point that local party committees, who are representative, they're elected by their own registered voters, they're the people that nominate candidates in the first place. We all acknowledge that. Everybody's entitled to petition and so forth. But in general, candidacies are determined by local party committees that are representative of their party. And given that that is the normal way a candidate is put onto a ballot, I think over, over the years, the council has realized that, well, if we need to choose someone from a certain party, let's extend the courtesy to the respective party to nominate someone to fill that spot. At that point, the council, of course, is not obligated. And for, there could be any number of reasons why the council would feel uncomfortable accepting somebody that was nominated. They could have any number of objections. We had a recent situation where I was, I was the main objector, even though it was a mayoral appointment. So granted, it's not a guarantee. But unless there is, there are strong legitimate reasons for someone to be, to have objections to this, it's been the tradition and policy of the council to follow those recommendations out of a sense of respect, out of a sense of protocol, out of a sense of courtesy, so on and so forth. That pretty much covers why I think it's very important that this council follow that policy, follow that tradition, follow that procedure. And after that, then we can start talking about the person who might be nominated. So first of all, not first of all, I've been speaking, what I am going to do is I would like to place into nomination the name of Alexa Tomasi to replace Gina Morganstein on the town council.
I second that, Mr. Chairman.
Having made that nomination, again, I've made the case that I think it, frankly, the only fair and decent thing the council could do is to accept that nomination, that recommendation from the local Democratic Party Committee, and seat Ms. Tomasi. But clearly, there's, this is an important seat. So we talk about, is she qualified for this? I'm not going to read her resume. You've all received dozens of letters. You've all, you'd all know her resume. But let's make one thing perfectly clear. There are various reasons why Ms. Tomasi is not only suitable, but appropriate for this, for this seat. Her education, her public service, her activism, her involvement in more causes than I could name. Make it clear that she is someone who, for many years, has been community-minded, intelligent, educated, and, and devoted to her community. From a political standpoint, she was a nominee and ran in the last election. She spent close to a year going door-to-door speaking to Wallingford voters, and came pretty darn close to getting elected. She was 10 out of 9, I guess, almost 5,600 votes. So if one wants to then say, well, I think the council should, from a political point of view, pick the person who got the next highest number of votes, that's not even a judgment upon her as a person. That's a judgment on the system in which we operate. It's not like we, the Democratic Party just picked someone out of a hat, said, hey, this is somebody we'd like. Ooh, we have an open seat. Let's put this person forward. Maybe there's some underlying motives for trying to promote somebody or get somebody involved. No, they went and they, they had a couple of people that were probably interested, and there was a long discussion, but not that long. Everybody said, you know what? The person who ran proved themselves committed, aware of the issues, ready to serve, received the next highest number of votes. So common sense would dictate, if you want to take it from a strictly political point of view, this is the person who should take the seat over. Again, no one is bound by this. This is not a rule or a guideline. It's really more a matter of common sense. So if you take, take it from any number of perspectives, tradition, protocol, courtesy, the way we've done it over the years, and I don't have to point out the number of times it's happened, or qualifications, or from strictly a political point of view, that an opening has arisen from a Democratic seat, who's next, who receives the next number of votes? That would seem practical. The nice thing about it is you don't have to explain it. You don't have to justify it. But I dare say, if you chose, choose not to follow my nomination, you need to justify that. So at that, I would ask that you all take close consideration of what I've asked, what I presented, and that you choose to vote in favor of seating Alexa Tomasi on the town council to fill the, the available seat. Thank you.
Mr. Carmody.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and good evening. This is my first opportunity to address this council as a member. It is truly an honor to join all of you and to work alongside you for the betterment of our community. It is also my honor this evening to have seconded the nomination of Alexa Tomasi to fill the vacancy on our council due to the resignation of Counselor Morganstein. I first want to say thank you to Mrs. Morganstein for her commitment to our community and for her service on this council, and I wish her and her family well. Ms. Tomasi is a deserving candidate to fill Mrs. Morganstein's former seat. I have had the opportunity to get to know Alexa over the course of this past year. I know her to be a passion, to be passionate about her ideals and be passionate about our community. She is kind. She is considerate. She is hardworking, and she is a professional, and she is qualified for this role. Ms. Tomasi has a background of community service. She has organized food drives for Master's Manor, as well as organized numerous other charity events in our town. She has many years of nonprofit marketing and advocacy experience, and she is now working at the Yale School of Medicine's Department of Pediatrics. And Alexa holds a bachelor's degree in urban and community studies from UConn. I know that she will serve this community with distinction as a town counselor. Beyond her qualifications, my party, the Wallingford Democratic Town Committee unanimously recommends her for this appointment. They do so in part because of her qualifications, but mainly because she was on the ballot in November and was the next highest vote getter, receiving 5,854 votes from our local electorate. This is not a typical appointment. We are filling an elected position, and the voices of the voters should be considered and heard. According to the newspaper this morning, maybe a president was set for not following a political party's recommendation to fill a vacancy of an elected position on this council back in 1980. That was not my vote. I wasn't even alive then. I, I think what was done then was wrong, and I think it is wrong to do now. I would hope there would be respect for each other's parties in this particular process. Most importantly, we should, we should respect... Most importantly, we should respect what 5,854 voters did in the voting booth this past election. Again, it is my honor and pleasure to second the nomination of Alexa Tomasi. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Any other comments from the council? There being none comments from the public?
Alexa Tomasi, 213 Washington Street. Thank you to the council for allowing me to speak tonight. As you know, I ran for town council in 2021, and though I fell short in the vote totals, I was humbled and proud to have received 5,854 votes from Wallingford's constituents on my first run for office. You are now faced with making an appointment to Councilor Morgenstein's seat, and I ask that you consider me for that seat. With the challenges we are steeped in now and all that may lie ahead, it's more important than ever to have as many voices and generations represented at the table as possible. We can all agree that we are here because we want to see the town we love continue to prosper. I am eager to work toward decisions and solutions that will improve the everyday lives of Wallingford residents as a councillor, and I am prepared to serve just as I was in November. I have spent the past decade building bridges with people, groups, and organizations in Wallingford and neighboring towns in order to do the most good. I had a wonderful relationship with past police chief William Wright, who was always amiable and pleasant to work with to ensure safety at our local events and communicated with me fully when a terrible crime was committed just a block from my home. I even offered to train the department to create and use a Facebook page to communicate quickly with people in town, an idea that was stymied at the time but has since been brought forth by members of this council. I have managed food drives, I have worked with my close friend Farah Salam to host the first community conversation at our local mosque after the 2017 travel ban, and opened the hearts and minds to all the different kinds of people that make Wallingford so amazing. I have also spearheaded many nonpartisan voter registration drives and campaigns in order to increase voter turnout and access in Wallingford. My education and my work experience may be well-known or have been provided to you. I received a unanimous endorsement from the Wallingford DTC for this seat and ran a vigorous campaign, all while being mentored in town council processes, and I am prepared to hit the ground running to learn and work as a Wallingford town councillor. One of my main goals is to continue to make our town and public spaces safe, hospitable, and attractive. While I understand this process and that this group ultimately has the final say, I hope you will consider me for Councilor Morgenstein's open seat. She served as an inspiration to me in my endeavors, and I'd hope to do the same for others that dream of running for office. Thank you for your time.
Rebecca Highland, 18, Haller Place. Thank you very much. Before I had the opportunity to become a stay-at-home mom to my two-year-old, I was a teacher at Sacred Heart Academy in Hamden, and I had the opportunity to teach social studies there, civics-focused, taught a class called Constitutional Foundations. And on the first day of class, one of the things that we discussed was integrity, which was obviously pivotal in a high school classroom. And one of the things that I explained to the students was that 80% to 90% of cheating goes uncaught. So when we talk about the concept of integrity, we think about what is it? And what it is is you and the mirror. It's when you go home at night and you look at yourself in the mirror, can you truly say that you have stood up for what it is that you should do? When I think about how we should model integrity for our children, I think about what that means. And among the other things that I taught was a class called Constitutional Foundations. And we looked at the rise and the fall of democracies, we looked at the characteristics of authoritarianism, we looked at the sanctity of a free and open election to democracy, we looked at the importance of avoiding sham elections, such as those that take place in countries like Russia, where people are asked to vote but then handpicked candidates are put in place behind closed doors. And on November 2 of 2021, we had a free and open election. Thousands of people went to the polling places, and they gave their voice meaning. They utilized a dearly fought right to vote, one that people have spread blood for. And that opinion, that voice that represents the electorate of Wallingford, chose Alexa Tomasi 10th, certainly. The pinnacle of what supports our republic, the one that you all just stood up and swore your allegiance to, is free and open elections. It is that our representatives are held accountable to the will of the people. In tonight's decision, that's Alexa Tomasi. In tonight's decision. Now, the town charter provides that the town council should appoint someone when there is an opening. That's a procedural determination. That's a how. It does not prescribe who or why the town council should appoint someone. And it would be ridiculous to think that anything other than what the will of the people have said matters. That's wordplay. And if, you know, one of the things that upsets people about politicians is the concept of intellectual dishonesty. It's when we purport to say words that mean something but then we act in opposition to them. A free and open democracy means that the people vote and then we respect those people. And to say that the decision that is being made tonight is any different than the decision that was made on November 2 is a level of intellectual dishonesty that would assound me. Because it's not. In substance, it's not. There is nothing substantially different about what's taking place tonight than what took place on November 2. Should you decide to appoint someone other than Ms. Tomasi, you are making a public statement that you are not accountable to the voters of Wallingford. That is a terrifying proposition. And to be clear, what scares me more than the fact that you may not know that is the fact that you do. As a teacher, I also taught a law class. And the reason I taught a law class is because I was a defense attorney before I became a teacher. And before a child witness could testify, he or she was questioned, voir dire, to make sure that he or she knew the difference between truth and lie, and that they understood when they took an oath what the truth meant. Merely two weeks ago, you all took an oath in this room. I hope you weren't lying.
Just for the benefit of those who don't attend our meetings regularly, per item, there's a 20-minute public comment limit, and per speaker, there's three minutes. So just please be mindful of time.
Hi. I'm Nancy Fabrizi, 923 Clintonville Road. I emailed a letter to the town council today. Of course, I know you all have jobs, so I didn't get any responses. I'm assuming you were busy. So I'll just read it now for everybody's benefit. I wrote, "Dear Counselor, with and in respect for the democratic voting process and the will of your constituents who duly voted you into your seats that you have right now, the voters of Wallingford showed that Alexa Tomasi was to be next in line for a town council seat. Logically and democratically, that gives her the next open seat on the council, which Gina unfortunately was unable to fulfill. You must remember that the integrity of elections has been called into question for over one year now, and we need not feed that false narrative of elections not representing the will of the people. Alexa Tomasi received unanimous support from the Democratic Town Committee to replace Gina Morgenstein. Once again, because of our at-large voting system here, you represent our voices too. Again, the majority of the constituents put Alexa Tomasi next in line to win a seat on the town council. To do anything other than appoint Ms. Tomasi to this open seat calls into question the integrity of the vote and the voter's voice in the democratic election process. The vow you took to uphold the Constitution and the sanctity of our democratic voting process does trickle down from the national level to towns of every size, including Wallingford. The November 2021 election in Wallingford shows without question who received the next highest number of votes for placement on the town council. It's Alexa Tomasi. This fact is even above and beyond the qualifications of an individual candidate to hold elected office, and, as we've heard, Alexa is very qualified to hold that seat. Let's see. Your responsibility in representing the will of the voters who participated in the election and not in allegiance to a party or one's personal choices or values, which hopefully include allegiance to the democratic process, is what you need to consider to everybody. Otherwise, you will have to justify your decision to not put her in place. I'm hoping that you are. For the sake of respect for the democratic process and your faithfulness to it, please vote to place Alexa Tomasi in Gina Morgenstein's vacated seat. It will speak volumes about how we, as a community, show that we believe in what is right about our democratic process and values. Do what is right, please."
See a hand. Is that Mr. Avalon?
Don't mind if I take my mask off just while I'm speaking. Thank you. Mr. Mayor, council people, it's been a while before I came before the council to speak. A lot of you don't... Sorry, Vincent Avalon, 1 Ashford Court. That's how long it's been since I've spoken before you. But I don't know if any of you remember, I was Democratic Town Chair for nine years. In that period of time, Mr. Bob Parisi was the chairman of the council. And during that period of time, there were a number of occasions where I had to write a letter recommending a particular person to fill a vacancy on a board or a commission. And during my entire term as chairperson, never once was a recommendation that I made on behalf of the Democratic Town Committee denied by Mr. Parisi. And that certainly wasn't because of a personal relationship that Bob and I had, although we are friends. But there was a mutual respect, and there was a courtesy, and there was acceptance of precedent. And so that went a long way in accepting the recommendations of the party. I don't want to repeat a lot of things that other people said here so eloquently, but let's cut to the chase. The name of the person the Republicans are considering is Jason Zandry, a former council person. So what I'm thinking is this, I'm trying to figure out what would be the reason for six Republicans to get involved and in the middle of a recommendation made by the Democratic Town Committee? Why would they consider, if the rumor is true, it's a pretty solid rumor, and we'll soon find out whether it's rumor or fact, why would they consider Jason Zandry? What message would that give to people who want to get involved in future politics? Someone wants to run, they sign up, they campaign, they're on the ballot, they get votes, and they have to be faced with the reality that someone, even though they would be entitled to get that position that they ran for, some other people can decide to throw that aside, and I can only think that the argument, maybe I'm wrong, but we'll hear, is that Mr. Zandry has the experience and is an incumbent. Wow. Would I, as a young person or a novice in politics, want to get involved in politics if I thought I can do all this work, get support, campaign, and then have the results determined by five or six people? It's disheartening. I can't even imagine how you would consider doing that.
If you give me a second, I'm just gonna ask if anybody else wants to speak, because you're over time and there's a little minutes left.
I stayed in my position. Thank you.
Thank you. Right, second row, right there, thank you. Name and address for the record, please.
Leah Manning, Wallace Row.
You have to pull the mic down, we can't hear you.
I'm short. I just wanted to say that...
Name and address for the record, please.
Leah Manning, Wallace Row.
Thank you.
We all know Alexa is completely qualified for the position. It's on her resume, she has the scholastics for it, and what she also has is the energy. A lot of people, they get old, they get tired, I'm one of them, we don't have the energy. She has absolute energy to say, I will fight for you. She has energy to say, I will walk and knock on every door for you, and she will just say, whatever it is that I could possibly do for you, I will do in an instant. I don't need to be physically there, but I will find you the help that you need. Jason Zandry, I love him, he got a little tired. He did. There was some instances where we had in town, and he said, I don't want to speak on it. Well, what do you mean, you don't want to speak on it? This affects more than just yourself, this affects us, this affects a lot of families that don't look like your family. It affected me personally, and he didn't want to speak on it. So of course, you know, social media is a thing now. We talked about it, and it went on and on about all the racial division that was going on. Sorry, I don't have COVID. You know, when the signs came up and we had them on major crosswalks, he didn't want to talk about it. He said, it doesn't exist, we're not going to talk about it, I'm not going to keep bringing it up. All right, my brown children need to know that you will be there for us when we need you. Alexa doesn't get tired like that. Alexa will speak on it on every instance. I don't need to read her T-shirt, I don't need to see her sign. I know that if someone is accosting me and my children, she will jump in front of them, which she actually did. So that's why she stood up for us, we are going to stand up for her. Because we don't need a sign, a T-shirt, or a position for her to be on this council to know how she approaches things and what she means when she says. So thank you for your time. We know that we support Alexa.
Thank you. There's time for one more speaker.
Riley O'Connell, 30 Northford Road. With all due respect, Mr. Chairman, you know, I haven't missed one of these meetings, whether virtually or in person, for several years now. And there's been multiple occasions in which we've waived the 20-minute rule when we're talking about a very serious impactful issue. Now, I realize it is within your purview, but this is an issue that will impact every single other issue that addresses this council, this council addresses, over the next two years. So I would ask that, given, you know, I've never seen this many people in this room, and in a pandemic, no less, so I'm grateful to everyone who's come to have their presence known, but I could hope, I can't speak as well as some of the people that have already spoken, that's for sure, and I know there's a lot of other people that want to say some important words, so I'm hoping that after I speak here, you'll give them the opportunity as well, because they did come all this way on IC Road to do so. I'll be quick, because a lot of important points have already been made. But, and look, maybe this is sacrilegious for me to say in the first place, but over the course of me being old enough to vote, I voted for several of the Republicans that sit up there today. And I can tell you unequivocally that if anyone votes no to this nomination, I would not support them again in the future. Because there's no way around it. To vote no on this, and I think that's why everyone's here today, regardless of party, is to put party above precedent, above the procedure, and above the clear, demonstrated will of the voters. will of the voters. Now, I'm glad Sam did bring up our counselor, I gotta get used to that. But that 1980, which again was well before I was born, it was all before our nominee was born as well, and we've had several other appointments that have been non-issue since then, but anyway, the 1980 appointment was very similar to this one. And one thing that I don't think's been brought up enough is, and I honestly, obviously, wasn't aware of that, because I was long before my time, but I looked into it when I read the paper this morning, there were consequences to that. Because it was exactly the same scenario, the next highest vote getter was nominated, they were rejected, and then after 1980, going to 1981, the Democrats have never had full control of the Wallingford government since. They paid the price for choosing party over the greater good of Wallingford. And so I just want to point out, Alexa Tomasi got six, almost 6,000 votes. There were six Democrats running, six Republicans running, everyone's allowed up to nine votes. If even one-tenth of her 6,000 voters voted for one of you up there, and they decide that because you do not respect the vote that they made, to not support you in the future, other than the bare minimum number of Republicans up there today, those are the only three that'll get elected in the future. These things have consequences, so I just want you to respect that. I'm, in general, a little bit confused here, because none of you have ever been at a loss for words before, so I hope that the fact that none of you, other than Sam and Vinnie, have spoken on this yet, that this will be an easier vote than I expected and that everyone here expected, but just know that by choosing to not say anything and still voting no, that's worse. Because that just shows that there is no, forget about legitimate excuse, there's no excuse whatsoever to deny this nomination, other than partisan politics, which just frankly has no place in Wallingford, it should have no place in Wallingford. So thank you very much.
So we are actually over time, and I'm going to bring it back to the council to see if there's any more comments from the council, and if there, Council Morone.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. You know, I appreciate everyone coming out tonight to talk to us about this important issue and this sort of historic, you know, something that's only happened to us, like, say, three times in 40 years. So, you know, let's talk about the idea of the will of the voters, right? Elections have consequences, as Mr. O'Connell said, which I agree with 100%. So on Election Day, the voters cast their ballots, and there was nine winners, and everyone unfortunately didn't make it. And so the, an election's a snapshot in time, right? You can't then apply that election forward and say, "Well, the people that didn't make it would have made it were it not for this," right? If Mrs. Morgenstein hadn't run, and good luck to Mrs. Morgenstein, I wish she was serving, right, because that was the will of the voters, to have her serve. But good luck to her in the future. But if she wasn't on the ballot, perhaps Ms. Tomasi wins, perhaps the ballot's completely different, right? We have a, there's a couple of what I would describe as juggernauts up here, like in terms of people that always get a lot of votes, Mrs. Tatta, Mr. Servoni, I am not one of them, right? We're all beatable on some level. So the issue is, we get to today where we look at, Mrs. Highland brought up the idea of modeling integrity for your children, right? So I have three kids, so when I talk to my kids about integrity, it's about looking at a room full of people and making the decision that you think is best for you and the town without regard for what everyone in the room wants you to do. So elections have consequences, right? In our current system, there was 19, there was 19 available spots, right? Nine on the Board of Ed, nine on the council, and the mayor. The Democrats are entitled to, or the minority party, I should say, are entitled to six, right? So at the end of the election, you had six. So is the minority representation rule fair, right? If the public want, if the will of the people was to have nine Republicans serve up here, is that a fair result? And the answer is no, because there's a rule of law, right? We've decided as a state that there's a value in having minority representation. So I would say that the Charter, the governing body of our town, says that in this circumstance, the decision goes to the council. So therefore, is it fair? I'm not going to argue that it's fair, because it's obviously not the will of this room, but ultimately, it's my decision, and so I need to do what I think is best, you know, for this town and the people of Wallingford. And no disrespect for Ms. Tomasi, she worked really hard on the campaign, I hope she's up here at some point, but unfortunately, I do have another Democrat in mind that I think is a better choice. And so, in the interest of explaining myself, I know it's not going to make anyone happy here, but I mean, but, you know, I feel you deserve the explanation, so thanks so much.
With that, if there's nothing further from the council, Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Allenson.
No.
Carmody.
Yes.
Fishbein.
No.
Laffin.
No.
Morone.
No.
Tatta. I'm sorry, I didn't hear you. Testa.
Yes.
Chairman Servoni.
No.
Motion fails. Order. Calling for order. We're trying to run an organized meeting here, and. You can keep talking, and we'll take a recess until you decide you can be orderly. Okay, well. All right, are there any other motions? Counselor Fishbein, you're out of order.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Chairman, tonight, I've heard a lot about integrity and respecting the system, and tonight I nominate Jason Zandry to fill the uninspired term of Council Morgenstern. I make this nomination not with any ill intent for the nominee that was just addressed. Instead, I make this nomination based upon four main reasons. First, because he wants to continue to serve. Second, because he was unreasonably denied the ability to run for the seat that he would have won. Third, because the precedent set by the Democrats back in 1980 provides that flexibility. Heard a lot about precedent, we're going to talk about precedent. And fourth, because there's really no other person in this town that should be selected instead of Jason Zandry. For anyone that's viewed the town council meeting of December 14th of 2021, one takeaway from that meeting was that Jason Zandry, a member of this town council for six terms, intended to be back. In fact, if you noticed over the summer, many of you didn't watch our meetings, but Jason Zandry, for many of those meetings, was the only Democrat up here. I gave a juvenile justice forum in Cheshire many months ago, and the only member of Wallingford that came to attend that was Jason Zandry, because he showed interest in what was going on. Jason desires to be back. He's made a difference to this town, and I know that that night, December 14, he was crestfallen when he left this room. Yet he held his head up high, knowing he would be up here once again. On that night, nobody knew that Gina Morgenstern, "Sir, you're out of line."
Actually, this is the one time I'm going to say Counselor Fishbein is not out of line. So we're trying to run an orderly meeting here, he has the floor, and he is entitled to speak. There's a way to be recognized during these meetings, and you're all being disrespectful to this council. You might not agree with us, but we have, and you might not agree with what we just did, but we are here, and we are entitled to the respect that the voters have decided we should get.
Mr. Chairman, I will continue. Jason and I have for many years been kidred spirits of sort. We worked on the fireworks together, we came up here together, we worked on budgets together. We are more separate, though, than one would think. There's never been an occasion or a vote in this chamber that I've relied upon Jason and thought that I had his vote, no matter just because he was Jason. Jason's had his own votes, many times we've voted differently, and I know that he has the best interests of our town at heart. But clearly, the people of Wallingford have been satisfied with Jason Zandry as being a town councillor for the last six terms. Every time he is run, he has really not campaigned. He has put out no lawn signs, he has really not campaigned, and yet he has been successful, very successful. Every time, he's been one of the top nine. In 2021, that opportunity was not afforded him, not by his own hand, but by the hand of others. I hardly doubt that if anyone believes that if he had been on the ballot, that he would have not been one of the top nine once again. When I first learned that the Democrats were only running six for town council and were excluding Jason, even though he was willing to run as the seventh, I contacted him, and I said, "I will help you. I will help you if you want to be the seventh to get those signatures." Some backstory. In 2009, when I first ran for council, the Republicans had the same situation. John Laterno had fallen out of favor with the party, and the party told him that they were only going to run six, and that he was not going to be one of the candidates. I was new to this, and what I said to the party was, "Take my name off the list. I don't want the party infighting." The result of that was the party decided to run seven. And ever since that election, because we came together on that note, we've had six up here since that time. But here, there was no acquiescence like that. The decision was it was going to be six, and Zandry, a tried and true vote getter, was going to be cast asunder. As we got into July, I saw on Jason's Facebook page that he had gotten the petition, and the race was on. We didn't have a lot of time. The next day, I called him to ask where I could get copies, so I could help him get those petition signatures. He said to me in a very hoarse voice, "Craig, I'm in the hospital, I've had a heart attack." Shocked, I calmly said, "Okay, feel better," and I hung up the phone. A few days later, he was in a coma. Over the weeks that followed, it was like Weekend at Bernie's. I did not want to tell anybody of his medical condition, but also I wanted to help get those signatures. People would say, "Where's Jason?" My best response was, "He's doing his best." I did not know what would happen in November, but it did not matter. He was on the, if he was on the ballot, but he was not with us, it would be a fitting tribute to his service. On the other hand, he would assuredly win. I cannot tell you how difficult it is to collect signatures from members of the opposing party without a candidate. More troubling than that was the fact that some Democrats knew what had happened and were calling others, telling them not to sign the petitions. In the end, as we all know, the petition drive failed. Jason was released from the hospital. But that result, in my opinion, was plain wrong. This young man, a faithful member of the Democratic Party for many years, had stricken ill. Most honorable people would rally together. When your outcast brother lies in a ditch, do you lend a hand and pick him up, or do you pass on? Do you carry on your way? A moment of reflection is necessary. I know what I did. Those that knew, what did you do? I leave it at that. And finally, we get to the precedent. Tonight, we've heard about precedent. What is precedent? Webster's Dictionary defines it as something done or said that may serve as an example or a rule to authorize or justify a subsequent act of the same. Tonight, it's been argued precedent. All of that precedent was actually when Republican-controlled councils were approached with a Democratic name. They all assented. The one time that I can find, and I've had a fascinating experience going through all these news articles, is in 1980, when. It was 1986. Edward Diana, well, I'm going to, there's one instance where there was additional precedent followed, just to set the record straight. In 1986, Edward Diana, who was a Democrat, resigned from the council. The Democrats nominated Frank Adams Jr., and the Republicans that dominated the council took that. In 1980, though, it was different. In that municipal election, the Democrats won six seats and the Republicans three, so the direct opposite of what we have here today. One of the three Republicans, Vic Verenjo, announced that he was going to resign due to his job being transferred to Arizona. The Republican Town Committee met, and they nominated Noma Boma. She had run in the last election. She only lost by seven votes. Not the 400 you're talking about here tonight, seven votes. Nonetheless, on August 13 of 1980, the Democrat-controlled town council convened, faced with the nomination, and they selected somebody, never even went to the town committee, William Bergoff. That is the precedent that some choose to ignore. So that opens up the flexibility to do what I think may happen tonight. In this case, Jason has shown that he can do the job, and said he'd like the job, not just like the job, but continued to do the job. Jason was excluded from the ticket. And in 1980, the Democrats. And in 1980, the Democrats rejected the appointee or the nominee from the Republicans. Mr. Chairman, my conscience tells me that there is no other choice here than Jason Zandry, and with that, I so move.
Is there a second?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'll be, I'll be very brief. I want to second the nomination of Mr. Zandry for the empty seat in the council. I've served with Jason for a number of years. Jason and I politically are probably, as I said, when he left the council in December, he and I are probably politically further apart than, I mean, anyone else in this council, but I have great respect for him. I see his family at church, I see his kids at Religious Ed, I've, you know, kids at sports and so on and so forth. He's worked hard for this town for a number of years, and I disagree on a great many things, but I know he will continue to work hard for Wallingford in the future. And again, no disrespect to any other candidate, but I can't make a decision to pick someone that, you know, I've worked with Jason for years, I trust his judgment. Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Any other comments from the council? Counselor Testa.
I'm going to respectfully ask people that probably support me to stop. Just stop. Nobody's more, I'm as upset about the outcome as anyone else, based on the positions I, the arguments I made. It didn't go through, so we're going on somewhere else. But I think we're getting out of hand here, and I do not, I'm not going to make this about or against anyone else. I just think it's starting to get out of hand, that it's not necessary. You can disagree with me on that one and say the hell with you, Testa, that's okay too. I am going to say this. I've, I'm, we have a nomination for Mr. Zandry. I spoke highly to Mr. Zandry on his last meeting, and I've served with him for many years, and I, I'm not going to speak ill of Mr. Zandry, I have nothing against Mr. Zandry. We've been friends for many years, we've been colleagues, and if that's where this is going, that's where this is going to go. I think we need to pull back a little bit on the animosity that's flying around this room right now. You don't have to, and that's okay. I will say this, though. I still feel very strongly in the process that I argued for. I, I'm going to adhere to my beliefs on that, I'm going to abstain on this vote, I will not vote in favor, and that has no bearing on my feelings towards Mr. Zandry, one way or the other. It's my commitment to the position I placed earlier. I think. I think we... I'm not happy with the fact that the council did not follow the tradition and, in my opinion, the will of the voters, and I will abstain from this vote. But I'm not going to get involved in throwing stones here. Thank you.
Can I start laughing?
Thank you. Yeah, my support or my no vote in the last motion has absolutely nothing to do with you, Ms. Tomasi. I've been the 10th vote getter in a race by a vote count that would have led to a recount had six Republicans not already won. I was the seventh guy. It was the race... Excuse me. It was the race that Councilor Fishbein was referencing when we ran seven. And ever since then, whenever there's been an open seat within the Republican Party, we've run everybody that was interested, and usually, it's seven people. And we've maintained that six-person majority. And the decision from the party was, not only did we not want to fight, but we decided that we wanted the people to decide. And I do believe in the way that it played out last summer and last fall. That's... Maybe it's just a difference in our ideology or strategy. If you had run seven and Jason had lost, we wouldn't be here. It's that... That is the basis of... You know, when I hear the will of the people, I don't feel I or the rest of us are straying from the will of the people. I think, given the opportunity to... You know, it was referenced that the six people were choosing the next councillor. So what I didn't know until this summer was the Democratic Party chooses their candidates differently than the Republican Party. The Republican Party has a caucus opened to all Republicans in town. Everybody shows up. You can make whatever nominations you want, and that's the slate. The organized party, the Town Committee, can do no better than endorsing or recommending people, and it's just a bullet point on their desire as they seek nominations at that caucus. I didn't realize that there was a more strategic or stricter structure operated by other parties. I believe had... I believe this is... This would ultimately be the will of the people, and if you disagree, I'm sorry. But again, this is nothing against Ms. Tomasi. She ran a good campaign. She is qualified. But I come at this from different angles than the rest of you, and again, this may just be ideological differences. Thank you.
So we're operating under the Town's Charter, first adopted June 6, 1961. Since then, it's been revised November 69, November of 73, November of 81, November of 89. There's a commission that was formed about 2007, 2008 that's not acknowledged here because that revision didn't pass, and then it was revised again in November of 2017. There's been that many opportunities to address Chapter 2, Section 6, with respect to the filling of vacancies. And it stands that the Town Council is the body that's empowered to fill the vacancy. This is our system, and it could have been changed. It hasn't been. Our system is one of representative democracy. This is... People vote for us, and then it's our obligation to follow the rules that are given to us. So the opportunity to change that provision, to have Town Committees make recommendations for vacancies, has been skipped seven times, six times, my apologies. Anything else from the council? Mr. Carmody?
Mr. Chairman, I just want to echo Mr. Testa's sentiments. I have known Mr. Zandry for at least 15 years. He's a friend. I was proud to support him for his mayoral run in 2013 and for all his council runs as a Democrat. Jason has served our town well on this council, and I will work with him if he is appointed this evening. However, this process should have respected the wishes of the Democratic Town Committee in filling this Democratic Party-held seat. I have already cast my vote to fill this seat. I will also abstain from this vote this evening, and my abstention is not about the person. This is about the process, and this process was flawed. Thank you.
If there's nothing else from the council, I will open up public discussion again. Ms. Sella.
Alita Sella, Chair of the Wallingford Democratic Town Committee, resident at 241 North Little C. Avenue Extension. Republicans are the majority. The Town Charter prevents you from having more of a majority than you already need, than you already do. Deciding to repudiate our nominee and picking someone you like because they align with what you like isn't the point of what you're here to do tonight. The point is to choose someone the minority party parts forward to honor that balance of power. This is a gross injustice against that balance of power. The mayor in 1980 was just as outraged as I am right now. And to call this a precedent that you care to repeat, maybe you should ask the mayor about that. Leadership with integrity. I can't say it any better than how Rebecca Highland spoke of it, but that's everything. Trust is a huge part of democracy. Mutual respect and listening is the only way to bring people together for civic engagement and to help people become more responsible citizens. We have at-large voting in Wallingford. Of course, Mr. Zandry wins. He's got high name recognition, as is Mr. Fishbein. And he's able to capitalize on that, as is Mr. Fishbein, as is many of you, Tada, right? That's our system of voting in Wallingford. So the fact that Zandry couldn't get enough signatures, even when he was ill, I think also speaks to maybe he doesn't have quite the support he thinks he does. I'd like to talk to you about the 2020 election, when Jim Jinks decided to enter the race. It took him 24 hours to get enough signatures to run for state rep. 24 hours. If the volunteers and voters wanted Jason on that ballot, he would be, he would have been on that ballot, whether or not the DTC supported it or not. And then we thought Jim Jinks won. In fact, Mr. Fishbein had already conceded. When I, I, me, Chair of the DTC, discovered the discrepancy in the votes, I'm the one who brought it to our committee's attention. We're the ones who reported it to the Secretary of State and the Town Clerk. We lost that election because we had integrity and trust in this system. Now, no one owes us for that, but I would hope that act of integrity means something to you. We need an ethos and ethic that is about trust and more than about just yourselves up there tonight and who you would prefer to work with. This is about doing the right thing, not for the Democratic Party, not for the voters, not for Alexa, but for the whole of fairness and striving for the best of what democracy can be.
Jason Zandry, 35 Lincoln Drive. With the chairman's permission, I'd like to sit down at the table. I'm going to be cross-examined for the remainder of this evening while this item is being discussed, and I'm not going to be able to stand here that long.
I'm not going to allow you to be cross-examined. It's not how the process works, so...
That's fine. You know what? I don't need a mask because I've got my vaccination. I've got my booster shot. I was ill.
All right.
I was ill. I went to get a test, and it came out negative three times. I've been in these chambers since I was 18 years old, and I've never seen the level of disrespect given to this room as I've seen here tonight. I was asked to set the record straight, so I'm going to try and do that now, and I'm going to begin with the fact that I didn't have a committee to collect my signatures because I wasn't counting on a committee. I started my conversation with respect to running for office this year, the way that I do it every single year, and it is by making the same statement I make every year, which is that these votes should be the will of the people, always, always, without exception. The problem is, we have limitations on who gets to run for office, and this occurs many years in a row. Whether it's the Republicans or Democrats, there's always a challenge to whether or not we're going to run a full ballot. There is nothing in these different sets of rules that even requires either party to run more than three, if they so choose. A body of 80 people saying, "This is who the 26,000 are going to see," limiting that, that's the first mistake. The second mistake is to sit there and turn the argument that I use into a discussion point about how this should be about the will of the people, when the entire article they outlined said anything but that. They were looking for a winning solution. They were looking for the ability to strategically run a campaign, and that is why they limited the number of voters. This is not an effort to block certain people from running. We are sincerely looking for a winning strategy. Running fewer candidates will have a better strategy, will be a better strategy than running more. How is that the will of the people? Going back to not getting nominated, I resigned for the Democrat Town Committee. I was not going to be a part of this type of exercise to limit who gets to come to the show. That's not our job. Our job is to find candidates, groom them, and let the people choose, not to say it's not going to help our strategy. They talked about the process of all of that and how they had this other campaign where they had volunteers complete this in 24 hours. My plan was just to get the signatures myself. I got my ballots, talked to a couple people, and I fell off the face of the earth for This is really difficult for me to talk about because I almost died this summer. So if you want to be disrespectful, please remember what I'm giving up, too. This campaign to limit what I'm going to do, how I run, if I can run, got sideswiped because I got sick. You want to talk about the process, about how Alexa got here? The process was not open. The process was not all-inclusive. There were people that were not even invited to that meeting. But it doesn't even matter because the process of that meeting didn't even follow Robert's rule of order. Nominations were not opened. A motion was made, and then there was a discussion on the motion, and the question was called before Ms. Tomasi even got a chance to speak on her own behalf. A motion and a second. Can anybody tell me what the vote was on closing the question? You can't because there was no vote. The question was called and seconded, and there was no vote to stop the discussion. There was no ask if there was going to be any other nominees, and I promise you, it wouldn't have been me because I already pledged early on I was not going to approach the committee, and I meant that. This has been a railroad effort since day one to control this committee.
I'm just going to ask you to wind up so that others can speak.
The leader of the Democrat Town Committee wrote the following on my Facebook page when she was a citizen. She wasn't even on the committee yet. "If you choose to fight this further, Jason Zandry, you are wading into dangerous waters. What you have posted was a Republican conservative talking point that had you... You had to be living under a rock to not realize what it meant. Land of the free, not land of the free lunch." Okay, sure, maybe you didn't realize what people would interpret that to be, certainly not even close to how you said you meant it. Then you punish people for reacting. Let's just agree that both parties were in the wrong here and restate the removed members of the groups on Facebook. Do not continue this battle. It will not go well for you." This is Citizen Alita Sella at the time, and you want to know why I fight and push back? This is why.
I'm going to ask that we stop making personal remarks.
This has been a slaughter campaign against me for a long time, and it's here in the room this evening.
Thank you. I'm just going to move on to another speaker. Thank you, Ms. Mooney.
I love that you know my name. That's exciting. So I have this cute book called On Tyranny, and...
Just for the record, because we're noting speakers...
Oh, I'm reading it. I'm sorry. Whitney Mooney, 28 South Elm Street.
Thank you.
So I'm going to talk about this book, but I actually want to talk about some of Zandry's comments because I joined the DTC, or I became a friend of the DTC last year when I moved home from Boston, and I lived in multiple towns in Boston where I've never, ever, ever - not in Boston, sorry, in mass - ever seen something like this. This is just one of the most obscure things. Like, when a seat is taken, when somebody steps down from a seater, when somebody resigns, you go to a special election. I really, really want every single councillor, and I've talked to Councillor Marone about this, to consider talking more about the Charter. This is absolutely outrageous. No council should have this much power. That's how tyranny starts. I actually learned about the word tyranny in Mr. Bukas's class at Lyman Hall, and it sat with me for a really long time because it's kind of where I got involved in politics. I don't want to see our government turn into a tyrannical space, and that's what this is. When somebody gets 5,000 votes, or 5,000-plus votes, and somebody gets zero, I just don't understand how you can look at that and think, "That person makes more sense. The one that got zero votes makes the most sense." That's my first part. And the second piece, I was really lucky to kind of be a fly on the wall for a lot of the DTC nominations. I was... I ran as an exploratory candidate, but I looked at myself as an outsider coming back home because I was new. I hadn't lived here in 10 years, and I watched Jason Zandry throw a tantrum on Memorial Day. He threw a tantrum because the majority made a decision that he didn't like, so he resigned. And I just can't sit back and watch a potential future councillor continue to throw hissy fits to get his way. And what he did was he took most of the DTC off of Facebook pages and censored us. So, I mean, how can you possibly consider that the will of the people when somebody censors people on a regular basis, throws hissy fits to get what he wants, and hasn't done anything? done anything but complain? I'm really just disappointed in the decision tonight, and I plan on sending all of you this book in the mail because I really think you should read it, because the only way for us to continue to have a good government is to not become tyrannical. Thank you.
Gentlemen with the green hat.
I'm Jesse Reynolds, 850 Old Durham Road. So I was going to talk, actually, before, in the early one, and then I kind of, island blew me out of the water, so I didn't want to say anything. But the thing that I wanted to really talk about is, in 2007, when I ran, when I wasn't that much older than Alexa, I walked into the Elks Lodge, and I was completely and totally lost, and I had no idea what I was doing there. But everybody told me, "You're running, you're running, you should go to the Elks, or you should go to the VFW, you should go here, you should go there." So I went everywhere. Green, a lot more hair, very younger-looking-ish, people thought I was 12, and so I walked in, and I knew nobody, and I was probably like 30 years younger than the average person. But over at a table was Mr. Bob Perizzi, who knew me, and he was sitting with Rosemary Riscotti, and they waved me over. And then Iris Papale came in, and she sat with us. We had a nice conversation, and it was respectful, and it was decent, and he didn't have to invite me over, he could have let the Democrat sit by himself who's at the Elks trying to get votes, nobody knows who he is, but he didn't. He chose to sit with me and have breakfast. Sarah Riscotti asked me to join the Republican Party even. But the point in my story is that we, we respected one another. And whether or not we can agree or disagree what's going on in here is respectful of the chambers or not, the key element in all of this is the vagaries that the charter provides is that for you to make the decisions based on the situation. Gina Morgenstein had to resign for very personal and very awful reasons related to the health of her family, as well as her profession during this time. And for nobody to have mentioned that for her reason for resignation, and the appropriateness of her asking that Alexa, the next highest vote getter, be put in her place, is absolutely disrespectful to all of it. It is not Bob Perizzi asking the young guy to come over and sit and have breakfast at the Elks Club. No, 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 no. It's quite the opposite. And you guys, I mean, come on, you should know better than to do this. The Democratic Town Committee represents 8,000 Democrats. Whether or not it's 80 people in a meeting, each one of us represents 75 people. I am the leader of District 9. I represent 1,250 voters myself. Whether you think that's important or not, it's not up to you, because guess what? You don't know anything about what we do. You have no right to go in and deem what we did unfair when Mr. Zandry, and with all due respect, and Jason, I'm glad you're well and healthy, but he chose to walk away because we picked a strategy to only run six people because there's only six seats that we can take. We only had three. You're going to put nine people up? Why don't you guys do it? Why don't you put up seven, eight? Tom, how did it feel to lose when you were seven? Because I know what it felt like to lose when I was eight. So you guys, I mean, you can have all this discussion about appropriateness and everything else, but this overall was disrespectful, and that's why people are upset. So with all due respect to everybody involved, and thank you for breakfast, Mr. Perizzi. Have a good night, but you know what? You should really, really think hard about this. You have two people abstaining, so you're going to be the only people who's going to appoint the Democrat in the minority? It's a crummy thing to do.
Mr. Gross.
Bob Gross, Long Hill Road. I just want to say, no matter what's being said tonight, and I understand there's both sides, I just hope that the people here tonight stop making personal attacks. It doesn't look good for the Democratic Party. I'm a Democrat, as the mayor's probably aware, right? And you guys are aware. So I would hope that the infighting or personal attacks would stop. The, I mean, as Mr. Reynolds just said, procedures and legacies and how things happen and so forth, that's fair game, but I hope that anybody that comes up and speaks from here on in doesn't do anything personal. Thank you.
We have time for one more. Mr. Dearing.
Rajan Dearing of Sharon Drive. First of all, I just want to thank the eight of you for all your hard work on the council. I have a tremendous amount of respect for the amount of work that it takes to serve on the council, and for the amount of work that it takes to run for a seat on the council. As we can see here tonight, this is a very emotionally charged issue. As we could understand, we want to have nine councillors who are all going to do a good job serving our town. One thing I want to say is we're talking a lot about the will of the people. We have two individuals here that we discuss that are both well-respected by the town of Wallingford. Ms. Tomasi had about 5,800 votes in this past election in 2021, and Mr. Zandry in 2019 had about 6,300 votes. And this is apples to oranges to compare those two numbers, it's two different elections, I'm not trying to compare those two to each other. Just want to echo what Mr. Gross said. Certainly, this is very emotionally charged. I encourage us as a town to come together. Whichever individual gets chosen tonight will have my 100% respect and support as a councillor, and I encourage the rest of the town to do the same. Again, thank you all for your hard work.
Thank you. And that is time. Bring it back to the council. If there's no further comments, Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Allenson.
Yes.
Carmody.
Abstain.
Fishbein.
Yes.
Laffin.
Yes.
Marone.
Yes.
Tada. Testa.
Abstain.
And Chairman Servoni.
Yes. Motion carries. Mr. Zandry, congratulations. If you could come up and be sworn, please. Madam Clerk, would you please swear amen?
Yes. Hi, Jason. Would you raise your right hand, please? Jason, do you solemnly swear to faithfully discharge, according to law, your duties as councillor of the town of Wallingford to the best of your ability? So help you God. Thank you.
Mr. Zandry, I hope you enjoy your new seat. The two Democrats decided where you were going to sit. I hope it's okay.
Fine.
Moving on to Item 7, which is discussion and possible action regarding Wallingford's historical railroad station. Can we get a motion on the table to approve the request for proposal?
I move we approve the request for proposal for, I have it more written out than that. I move that a formal RFP seeking qualified developers with proven experience in adaptive reuse projects involving historic buildings be prepared for the historic train station for the purpose of considering it for use as a commercial lease.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Thank you, good evening, and if you could please introduce yourselves for the record.
Good evening. First of all, I'd like to congratulate the new councillors and congratulate the re-elected councillors. That being said, my name is Joe Mira, I'm Chair of the EDC. With me this evening is Tim Ryan, Development Specialist. We're here tonight to discuss an RFP to convert the old railroad station into a commercially leased space. EDC is convinced that researching an alternative use of this historical building will provide a unique opportunity to bolster our lower downtown center. Over the years, as part of the EDC's strategic initiative for the lower downtown center, we have worked with the town planning department, planning and zoning, and we're able to help them get approved the incentive housing zone. We updated the town center's zoning regulations and the parking requirements, just to name a few. What I'm trying to point out is that we did a lot of background work to help enhance the lower part of the town, and this, we're figuring this project would be the cornerstone that will pull all this together. With that, I'd like to turn it over to Tim Ryan.
Very good, good evening, everyone. As Joe stated, Tim Ryan, Economic Development Specialist for the town of Wallingford, we are very excited as an EDC to do something we think is monumentally different in our lower part of the hill, and that is to take and restore our historic train station. I sent a letter out, or Joe sent a letter out January 7th that talked about this very opportunity. I'm sure that some of you are aware, that most of you are aware of railroad station renovations that have taken place around the state of Connecticut, around the country, frankly, and these spaces have been turned into some very active community gathering spaces, from brew pubs to steak houses to, you know, different, all types of different active uses, and we think the, our historic railroad station is a prime opportunity for us to do just that. We, as an EDC, have been working for quite a few years to try to stimulate activity in the lower part of the hill. Joe mentioned a number of things. I've mentioned them in the letter, I've reviewed them in the letter regarding the incentive housing zone, different town center regulations, to try to stimulate economic activity in the lower part of the hill, to try to kind of mirror what's going on in the upper part of the hill, right? Uptown is, I mean, it's rocking, it's active, I mean, and unfortunately, it's not happening as generically down the lower part of the hill as it did uptown, but, so we need to get involved, and as I say, lead by example. We are very fortunate that we own the building. We own 6,400-square-foot historic building that we all recognize as a centerpiece of our town. It's where the gazebo is. The gazebo has become our trademark on so many different, you know, different publications, materials, et cetera. And we think it could be something really special. So what we're here to ask for you tonight is, first off, we, as an EDC, have been working on this for quite a while. We want to make sure that if you have any questions about where we're going, that we answer them for you tonight, so that we're all on the same page. We then want to get your blessing. Give us the green light to go out with an RFP into the marketplace to get some design put together. We are looking to adhere to a deadline to submit a Connecticut Communities Challenge Grant application to help renovate that space. Our grants administrator is working with us hand in hand with the application. So the timing is pretty critical. We've got to get, again, get green lights from you folks tonight. Rob Ultra Midas, our Director of Public Works, is here in the audience. If we have any specific questions about process, he's probably better versed than I or Joe to answer that. But we want you to say, yes, go for it. We go out for an RFP, which is in the process of being written and finalized, we get that into the marketplace, we then get a design firm that would be elected, or selected, rather, from that RFP, that we say, okay, you're going to be the firm that's going to put the vision together for the building, and some of that vision I shared in that letter. And then we have something that we can take, and it becomes pertinent to the application for the grant. So that's the process that we're looking to go for. So I think it's exciting. It's exciting. It's town-owned property. I've referenced it many times, saying that we'd lead by example. We want to see something happen down at the lower part of that hill. We've had a number of transit-oriented development opportunities, programs that have been, again, I addressed in that letter. There's energy. As a lifetime Wallingford resident, it's something that I would love to see happen. I just think it can be something really special, and we're trying to make that happen. So with that, I'd open it up, any questions that you may have?
Thank you. Thank you by ending your comments with how excited you are about this. I think the possibility is tremendous. I have a client who leases the old train station in Canaan and runs a brew pub there, and he's been very successful because he makes great beer, but in addition, the town has just thoroughly embraced his use of their old train depot. And I look forward to what the RFP and the process produces in terms of the possibility of really revitalizing that part of our town. I do think it's an exciting proposition. So thank you. Councillor Laffin.
Gentlemen, good evening, thank you. Yeah, this is very exciting. This has been a long time. For the rest of the room, along with councillor Fortell, we served as the council liaisons to the POCD, and from minute, you know, minute one, we were talking about this, and it was something that both he and I felt strongly about, countless meetings with some of you guys, planning and zoning, and then planning and zoning met with people, and the mayor's offices, and whatever. This has been going on a long time. For the 10-plus years that I've been up here, I've advocated to not lease government buildings for commercial use, and I have always, from the beginning, said the only exception that I could think of would be the train station. Not so much that it would be an exception, but that, like, I want to do it. Like, I think it would be great. I've dined or shopped in so many historic train stations from other towns in Connecticut, Massachusetts. I think it's a great opportunity to really develop and encourage more development in that area and get some more people downtown, not just for that one building, but then we'll spread out and go to the others. So thank you very much for all the hard work. I know it's, you know, some people are like, "Well, where'd this come from now? They're going out there and offer a P." This has been years, years, and I'm not going to pretend to have gone to more meetings than either of you by any means, and I've been to quite a few. So I know that this has been really thought out, really worked out, and I'd like to thank Superintendent Belizzi and the Board of Ed. It does house adult education right now, and then we will be working with them to explore different options and uses, and what we can do to help find maybe an even better location. So it's really with that partnership that this is all possible, so I just want to give credit to the superintendent for that. Thank you very much, and thank you, guys.
Councillor Tada.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Good evening, gentlemen. Mr. Ryan knows, when I, you know, before I was even elected, I think I talked to you one day and said, "We need to do something with the train station," and so I was thrilled to see this on the agenda. So I'm very supportive of this. I think this can really help the downtown. Like you said, our uptown is, you know, thriving, and I know people from other towns that come. It's a destination, and I'm hoping that this will be the same for the downtown, especially after the pandemic. You know, we talk a lot about helping businesses and what can we do for businesses, and I think this could be a great thing for businesses down there over the next few years. I know the parking lot, the old Brothers parking lot, we did get some pushback when we voted for that, but I think you probably always knew and were aware that that was a huge piece of this, because without that parking lot, I don't think this would have been able to happen. So now that we have that, you know, it can spur this forward, and I'm just very excited to see what you come up with. I would love to see a steakhouse, I know I've said that before, but we'll see, you know, there's lots of options, so we'll see. But I just think the possibilities are great for the downtown, for all of Wallingford, for the businesses. And also, like councillor Laffin said, I think kind of the elephant in the room with this was always adult ed, and what do we do with that? Because we certainly have a thriving adult ed program, and we don't want to neglect that or, you know, have any negativity associated with that. But from what I've heard, it sounds like Superintendent Belizzi is on board with this, hopefully I've heard correctly, and like councillor Laffin said, I'm hopeful we can work with the Board of Ed and find them maybe even a better location. So it's great that everybody's working together, and I'm just very supportive and looking forward to seeing what you come up with. Thank you.
Councillor Fishbein.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I too am in support, I just, you know, I'm protective of the park. So the parking situation, obviously, the major, I mean, there's parking on the street there, the Brothers parking lot, if somebody was a patron of this establishment would call for them crossing the railroad tracks, is that what's anticipated? Are we just dealing with the four corners of the railroad station as it presently exists? Those are the kind of questions that I have.
The public parking, the old Brothers lot, and the public parking that the town presently owns there, is the parking for this initiative.
So any, I mean, I don't anticipate an entry door being on the train track side, perhaps at the ends, right?
This building is on the National Register of Historic Places, so it is not likely that we would change entryways. You know, the, there are four entryways in the building now that would accommodate anybody coming from either side of the tracks. There's doors on the ends of the building as well as in the middle. There's, there's doors on the ends of the building as well as in the middle.
Okay. But, but I guess the majority of the traffic that's anticipated, you know, if it's a steakhouse or something like that, you're going to have people that are going to park the Old Brothers lot. And have, have we looked into, I, I know even when we had Celebrate Wallingford downtown and there was a lot of problems with people crossing the tracks and Amtrak and permission and all that stuff, is that an issue at all here?
Certainly not in my mind. I think-
I don't see it.
There's, there's been businesses along Quinnipiac Street forever. There was Brothers Restaurant before that. I mean, people cross train tracks all the time. I-
But at Brothers, the, the parking, a patron parked right there, right? I can't think of one instance in our downtown area that we have them park, or is that easterly of the train track to go to an establishment that's westerly of the train track, right? And that's, well, it's, it's reverse of that. That's essentially what we'd be asking for. So I, I know with Celebrate Wallingford, we, we had problems with having Celebrate down there because I forgot what that building is across from, well, right in front of Brothers, right? On that street there, we used to have all of the, the vendors there. And you had, you know, stuff that was to the east, and then you had stuff that was to the west. And there was a lot of problems with, you know, Amtrak and permissions and all of that stuff. So I assume that whomever is going to look at that kind of stuff, I'm just a little concerned. I have faith, as I usually do, you guys. So, you know, I'm going to sign off, but, you know, as long as there's not going to be any parking put on the park, and I know you guys are going to do due diligence, I look forward to seeing something that's bright and shiny and inviting.
First of all, there's never been a conversation with parking on the park. So I don't, I don't see that happening at all. And with the modernization that the, I'm sorry, that the railroad has done to those crossings, I don't see that being a problem as well. And also, part of the RFP would probably take that into consideration. That's why we're, we're asking for the next step. That's why we're not going full-blown, you know, ripping down walls and stuff like that.
Yeah, I'm just, I'm just, you know, I don't want to, you know, keep on hitting it, but, you know, if I had a restaurant there and I'm asking my employees to, or employees as well as patrons to park on the other side of the tracks, and somebody gets hit by a train, there may be an issue. If we own the property, there may be an issue. So just throwing that out there.
We'll make, we'll make it a point when we evaluate the, the RFPs that the, the successful company shows us some traffic patterns across the tracks.
Yeah, and also, we may need to get some insurance coverage to protect the town.
Yep.
So, but thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Counselor Testa.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Gentlemen, Happy New Year. I'm, I'm happy to see this. I, I do have concern about what, you know, what, what options there are going to be for adult education, but if we at least all agree that that's not something we're going to take lightly, and we see that we support the Board of Ed in making sure that that program has a centrally-located facility to continue their programming, I think that's, that's important. That this can be a great, and we've talked about it for years, that's something I've always wanted to see something done about. My main question is this. We've got the zoning, we've talked about that for 10 years. We got you the parking. Everything was, you know, designed to spur the development around the area. What's happening in all the other, in, in all the other, that whole area other than this? Or do you see this as being the next thing that's going to spur the development that we really need down there? Because frankly, a brew pub in the, in this building isn't going to, you know, make the downtown pop. It might get it started. Is there any other activity? Or do you see this as the missing link, if you will?
And so in, in 2021, the, the Old Stella's Plaza was purchased by a new developer. I'm sure you've noticed the improvements in the plaza. For the first time in over a decade, that plaza is fully tenanted. All right? So not to be taken lightly. You drive by that plaza, there's been improvements on the building. Where the Old Stella's location is, is presently a restaurant. There's going to be an outdoor dining component to that on the, as you're looking at the front door on the left side, or the west side of that building. That, so that gentleman has invested significant amount of money to improve that plaza. I think that's a very strong indicator, so something has happened there. Forest Center Street, we continue to work very closely with the owner of Forest Center Street, the old Rubens Men Shop Building. COVID, unfortunately, there was a tenant that was ready to sign a lease for that retail space on the first floor that would have been a great fit for us, but COVID took care of that. We're working very closely with him with, with regards to the ARPA funds as we roll out our ARPA fund process, that there's some money there to hopefully stimulate improvements to that building. You know, the complicator, one of the beauties of our town center is that it is made up of a, a patchwork of very small properties that gives it a lot of individualism and a lot of individual opportunity. One of the biggest detriments is that it's made up of a lot of small individually, individually-owned properties. So in order to take and, and put a project together, you need to assemble properties. And that has proven to be a bit of an issue. I will tell you that there's not a property, or I should say this, all of the properties that are in proximity to the train station on Quinnipiac Street and on Hall Avenue are all in the process or are active conversations with, with developers and realtors, no matter of whether they can pull a deal together. And the assemblage of properties is not to be, you know, underplayed. That's, that's a complicator.
Are these people, as you, from what you know, are there opportunities being considered that would be mixed use? Because that was the objective, to try to draw housing-
Yes, sir.
-down to that zone?
That's exactly what it's for.
That's what we'd really like to see.
Yep, that's what it's for. So, and it's another reason it's so important that this council supported the parking when, when the EDC had recommended the purchase of the Brothers lot for parking. I know that was not, at the time, the most popular decision in many people's world, but it, it becomes, and let me digress. Prior to that, the downtown zoning regulations were changed to reduce the parking requirement because we, we played situation with several lots around that railroad station, saying, what would it take in order for these projects to pencil in the marketplace today? And it, it, you need density. But our parking regulations didn't allow for the density, so we reduced the parking regulations. So you do reduce the parking regulations, people still have to park someplace. Well, we provide the parking on the municipal level. So I think, you know, we need a couple of good breaks down there. I'll go back even further, if, if, take your minds' eye down to Parker Place. When we worked with Davenport Associates, you know, a couple of years ago, that was, you know, mainly an old, a plumbing supply warehouse yard there, if you recall. Was a great deal of work done by, you know, the Economic Development Commission and the Planning and Zoning Department. Work with Davenport, who now has a beautiful facility up off of Fairfield Boulevard. And now we've got 300 additional apartments down on Parker Place, all within walking distance of the railroad station, all within walking distance of our town center. So you can kind of see the puzzle pieces coming together. Like a lot of things in life, it takes time, a lot more time than some of us are willing to, or are patient enough to, to digest, but it is what it is, so, but thank you.
And to, to be clear, your RFP does not involve the potential sale?
That is correct.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Counselor Carmody.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Mr. Ryan. I look forward to working with you both, especially on the improvement of our downtown area. I just have a few questions surrounding the relocation of our adult education system. Our adult education is a vital program in our community, and I, I believe our, its location has been an, an important factor in its success. Where is it being relocated to? And is this program changing in any way? Are just some of the questions I, I would like to know.
The superintendent is here someplace? Is Danielle here? I, I don't, I don't, I know that the superintendent and I and her predecessor, Dr. Menzo, have worked in locating a couple of possible places for adult ed to locate. Nothing has been done at this point, nothing is locked in stone. You know, we, we agree that the adult education program is a very important component to, to this community. No question about that. But we will endeavor to find a, a good location that fulfills their mission, their needs, while at the same time trying to, to advance the economic opportunity-
Need to be closer to the mic.
Sorry.
Sorry.
I, I appreciate that. I, I, I think I would be more comfortable in knowing what's going to happen with the adult education program before I, I can support this, this evening. But it is, it is something that I hope we can figure out. I know, and again, I am excited to work with you both on, on the improvement of our downtown area.
Very good. Thank you.
Counselor Allenson.
Sorry, I got very excited. I wanted to, thank you both for attending tonight. I did want to remind Counselor Fishbein that currently, adult ed attendees do cross those same train tracks to get to adult ed. So, I mean, if we're concerned about it, maybe we should look into insurance now. Further, echoing Counselors Testa and Carmody, I am very concerned about the relocation of adult ed and mostly revolving around, obviously, location is a, is a prime factor. And I do know that you don't know yet, so, and, and that you're working on it, and that Superintendent Belizzi, who is here in the crowd, is working on it and also very concerned. I do also want to urge people, or urge you to consider that where adult ed is located right now is on a primary transit location, whereas people don't have to take a secondary transportation type to get to where they're going. That, to me, is, is highly concerning because I know if I go to New York City, I'm not trying to change trains, just the same way as people don't want to change bus lines and so forth. Again, adult ed, we would want to make sure that there's adequate parking for those who do drive. And I, I do, there is a really super close relationship to adult ed and SCOW and making sure that those communities continue to stay close to each other. In addition, there's also the YMCA, which is a long walk, but it's not that bad, you know? So when we're talking about people making their way around town, it is such a central location and so vital to all of those factors, that all of those factors line up for us. I, I have the faith that you, you guys will do what is needed, but I did want to just point out a lot of those, those possibilities, especially as we look at places where we would relocate adult ed. And if you see something that is coming in the center of town, because I know you guys do tend to have your ear to the ground more than we all might know, I, I hope that you would help us to, and help Superintendent Belizzi to secure such a central location to all of these different factors. So, thank you.
Our communication with the superintendent's office is regular, including today.
I have no doubt. Thank you so much.
So this is really kind of the first step in the direction of, of figuring out what the optimal use of that would be. And, and both unfortunately, and I would ask people concerned about adult ed, all of us are concerned about adult ed, it's a vital program, but this project will probably move it, move at the speed of government to some extent. And so there's going to be plenty of time to relocate adult ed and, and take into consideration all the appropriate factors like public transportation for people who rely upon it in the program. With that, Counselor Fishbein wishes to speak.
Mr. Chairman, I just want to mention that I appreciate Counselor Allenson and Carmody being here tonight. They probably don't know why in particular, but this is probably one of the first things that we're going to vote on, all nine of us, in this term and for the first term at the time. And I think for terms, I will not have to vote first. So, because it is in the council rules that we always vote with A through Z, and for four terms now, I've had to vote first. So thank you for being here. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Chairman.
Mayor.
Just, yeah, I think your comment, it's a first step. That's really what it is because we don't know what this review is going to turn up, and it may become something that's not viable for some reason. So it is a, an initial venture to verify that we can use the building for something else in a, in a practical way.
Thank you. Counselor Tada.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just wanted to point out again, I know Mr. Ryan spoke of it earlier, but you are going for a grant for this, which it looks like potentially 50% match, but that has to happen by the spring of this year. So we can't be really government slow, at least to get to that point. But could you explain a little bit more about the grant?
Sure. So again, we're here tonight to, to inform you and then ask for your support of the project. If you say yes, go for it, we will go forward in putting an RFP out into the marketplace. We will secure a design firm that will then take a look at the building and go through all of the different visions that, that we have, including frankly, stepping through the front door of that building and completely gutting it back down to the historic brick infrastructure and starting over, building something, you know, really, really special. It includes the landscape work, sidewalks from the, from the railroad station out to the gazebo. It includes the restoration of the gazebo. Let's get all of that into, it's one site, get all of that into one grant application. So we will likely, if you give us the go-ahead, we will likely at a subsequent meeting, not too far from now, come back and say, we have selected someone from the RFP process, and there is going to be a charge for them to do the work that we would then submit for the grant. All right? We would need to pay that in advance. So we may be coming back, I hope, asking for some money to do that work. There's always the possibility that we don't get the grant. Now, you know, again, our grants administrator is working side by side with us on this project. She's very effective. She's very informed about what the tenants and, and requirements of a grant are, and we check off a lot of boxes in this grant. They're looking for transit-oriented development-type projects, they're looking for town center projects, they're looking for projects that will generate jobs. And we like, check, 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 check. We feel our chances are very good, but I can't say that, you know, we're, we're going to get it. If we then get the grant, we will probably find out the application deadline. We suspect right now, it's, it has not been announced by the state, but they're signaling that that'll be in April. So we want to move steadily until that April date, get our application in, then we wait probably until June before the outcome of the application comes in. And then when, I think we have several years after that to take and do what we want to do, do the job. So as I stressed to our superintendent, you know, we want to be diligent, we want to have our eyes open in terms of where adult education can go, but at any point along this process of, sorry for the poor pun, but if this gets derailed, then adult education doesn't have to leave. I mean, it's one of those things, let's just, you know, be aware. But I'm hoping that our enthusiasm, along with the, your enthusiasm and along with the state's very specific visions of what to do with this grant money, will put us in pretty good stead. As I stated in the letter on January 7th, it is a 50% match, so we will have some skin in the game. But, answer your question?
It does. Thank you so much for explaining that. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. I don't see any other hands on the council, comments from the public. Ma'am, if you could come forward and give us your name and address for the record, please.
My name is Susan Pearson, 25 Metler Drive. Some of you know me, Mr. Savoni, you and I have stood on the stage at adult ed graduations for a few ti, a few times. I worked at the learning center at the railroad station for 17 years, and it's been about 15 years that I haven't been there, but I just retired as the state director of adult education. Thank you, Mr. Fishbein, for my commendation from the state. And some others of you, obviously, I love your comments in respecting adult education and the relocation, and I hate to say that word, but because it is such a passion of mine and means so much to me, and of course, to the people who've gone through those doors and earned their credentials, learned how to speak English, gotten their citizenship, gotten training. I started, those medical training programs that you, that we have there, those are mine. I started those with the instructor many years ago. So I just, I'm just here because I'm passionate for this, and it'll probably just be my first time saying this because I'll have to go to the Board of Ed and speak. And I have more time because I'm retired now. So I have, I'm aware of what goes on in the state and what other, how other programs have been shifted around. shifted around, and I would hate to see this program be made into a smaller program, serving different people at different times of the day and not being able to go during the day, or having to find a place that maybe that class is in that building, another class is in another building. It's not easy for our students to move around. The Learning Center has been a home for our adult learners, and it's very welcoming, it's comfortable, it's not a school setting, which is another thing that is very important. And it's not that we are just serving people, kids who dropped out of high school, and that they just came back for a couple of credits. That is not who we serve. That's actually a small amount, a number of students who are served. So, I just want you to keep that in mind, because I will be back to keep harping on this, to make sure that adult ed is served properly, and it's hopefully, I think this is a great idea, but I know it won't happen for a long time anyway, the way things go here. So, thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Commerford.
Bill Commerford, 5 Broadview Drive. Mr. Mira, well, I don't know who wrote this letter. Was it Mr. Mayor or Mr. Ryan, this January 7th?
Mr. Mira signed it, Joe Mira.
Right, but Mr. Ryan stated that he was referring to his letter dated January 7th. I was confused.
He was talking in the general terms. It's an EDC letter that I initiated.
Okay. I want to circle back to the reason why I brought the grant administrator, and we don't have one, we have the secretary, because I had called, I saw this, and I talked to Sue, and I asked, what other things fall under this envelope or this umbrella for potential use of the money? For example, community pool. Community pool falls within the same grant. Your parking lot, Wooding Kaplan, falls within the same grant. The lighting improvements for Wooding Kaplan falls within the same grant. The paving of Brothers Parking Lot falls within the same grant. There's many different things, but seeing we didn't have the money or whatever for community pool, and it's a matching fund, if anybody took the time to read about what's available for the grants and the parameters, I don't know why, out of the blue, the railroad station got picked or cherry picked. One of the things that it says in this is that the job's supposed to be shovel-ready, and somebody up there just said, we run on government time. And also, this letter dated January 7th, it says, "Our intent is to apply for a Connecticut Communities Challenge Grant with an anticipated application deadline of early spring 2022." If you go to the website, they knew about this in October, and it says, "Application is available October 18th. Intent to apply date was December 3rd, and the application deadline, the deadline was January 14th. And the award for the grant is March to April 2022." So, I don't know if we had a grant administrator, the grant administrator would have, I would have thought, would have said to the administration, at least at the council, hey, this money's available, what do you guys plan? What's your envision? Because me, as a taxpayer, I don't know that this is my best vision for matching funds when we have bigger fish to fry. Wooding Kaplan, the lights, the Wooding Brothers, as well as community pool, maybe we could have put a bunch of splash pads in, all encompass this. Matter of fact, I brought up about the condition of our town hall. That's, this whole refurb of infrastructure and redoing this whole town hall falls within this grant. Now, as a commercial property person that I used to be, one of the things, why wouldn't we entertain selling this property? Because it seems to me that we could gain some funds. I have to think, in my opinion, that you probably have some code compliance violations, that's got to be all brought up, potential asbestos. You're talking to open up a big can of worms, and this is going to take a long amount of time, which means, because we've already missed the deadline, we already missed that. Why don't we bring up one of these other ones? Thank you.
Mr. Ryan, would you care to address the deadline issue?
Yeah, just to point of clarity, the grant has got two tranches. The first tranche, the first deadline was in January, it was stated, the second is in April. We are applying in the second round of the grant.
Thank you. Mr. Gross.
Bob Gross, Long Hill Road. I'll start with the school aspect. I was intimately involved with the school for two years and saw how important it is to people in the town here to get GEDs, to learn how to speak English, learn how to get, not learn, but to get their citizenship. The GED is so important to people that one of the people, the person I was involved with who got her GED from there, called me when she got her job and thanked me, because she didn't realize how important it was to get that GED, because she couldn't get a job without that piece of paper. That location and the superintendent's here is so important, because so many people, and I was there two nights a week, two hours each time. I saw the people that walked to Meadow Street, or I lost them when they took the left on Meadow, or they walked down Route 5 and so forth. There weren't buses at 9 o'clock at night, unfortunately, when I was there, or 8 o'clock, we had the nighttime classes, because she worked during the day. So, I think that before anything happens, and the superintendent's here, if you have some locations, do you know where they're going to be? Are you planning on keeping it in the center of town? It really needs to be in the center. Is it? She's here. You've had locations, they've said that they were. So, the whole thing is, where are you going to find a location of that size in the center? I'm not saying this isn't a good project, but you really need to take care of the people that use this building now. It's a segment of the population you do not see. There are many people in this town that are from a foreign country. Person I was with was not Spanish, and so, from Africa. And so, very difficult, did not drive, and so, I just hope that, number one. Number two is, and this to Mr. Commerford's point, time-wise, I don't know, something just doesn't sound right here. You got the RFP, you're going to put it out, and you're going to have this application back by April? So, Mr. Ryan, I assume there's somebody lined up already. There's got to be people already looking at this. I see a couple of smiles on the faces on the council already. That, so I assume that somebody's lined up, so you know what kind of business is potentially going in there? You know?
Like me to address the?
You can.
Okay. So, first of all, no, there's no one lined up. This is a process. The April deadline is something that we are anticipating by the state. They have not signaled exactly when it'll be. We keep saying, if we're ready by April, and the application deadline is in April, we're in good shape. If we're ready in April and the application deadline's in May, we're still in good shape. So, let's err on the side of being ahead of ourselves. Project timeline that we had set the fourth, I'll start with tonight, January 18th. I am to address the town council, along with Mr. Mira. By January 20th, our purchasing official will have a finalized RFP draft ready and ready to be advertised. January 28th, we would do pre-bid walkthroughs with anybody who's applied for the application. By February 18th, we will open RFPs Part A. Want me to go on?
No, no, you don't have to go on.
It leads up to a deadline of April. So, we have timed this application process.
The only thing is, this is an unusual building. It's on the National Historic Society. It is not ADA compliant as it sits right now, fully. If you were to renovate it, it'd have to become ADA compliant. I don't know how you're going to get parking in the Brothers Parking Lot to be ADA compliant with the train station across the tracks. Have you contacted Amtrak? Has Amtrak involved in this at all?
So, our law department has been involved with this for about a year. We brought this in public conversation for the first time at an Economic Development Commission in January of 2021, a year ago. That was the first time that we mentioned this publicly. We had then been working with the law department, and there had been some interesting things that the law department has come across, i.e., I kind of smile when I say it, but we were obligated to an agreement with Amtrak to maintain a ticket sales window in that building, and we were obligated to maintain a luggage storage area for when passengers get off the train, and it's someplace to store their bags. All right? So, our law department has addressed all of these issues to make sure that there is no encumbrances between what we'd like to do and what we're able to do, given its historic nature and the fact that there was, at one point in time, Amtrak actively used the building. Most recently, several weeks back, I was in the building with the general manager of the Wallingford Electric Division, because there is an electric panel in the basement that says "Amtrak" on it. I wasn't about to touch it. They came down with their engineers, they popped the box open, found out it is no longer being used. So, we have done, on the pathway to where we are right now, what I believe is all of the appropriate due diligence to make sure that we have availability, access to the building to do with it what we'd like to see done. By April, we're applying for a grant, so shovel-ready was mentioned by the previous speaker. So, the definition of shovel-ready, according to our grants official, is that we need to be able to present a project that says, if we get the grant, this is what we're going to do. Does not mean that, you know, as soon as we get the grant, we're out there, you know, ripping stuff apart. So, we just need to have a plan in place, and that's, and we feel that the timeline that we've laid out here is very specific. I even have on here on March the 8th, if we get to that point, and the RFP costs are established, that I will be back in front of the town council, asking for your support on that. All right? We want to have a contract in place by March 11th, which gives an adequate amount of time for a design firm to put together that shovel-ready definition project for the grant application. So, to put everyone's mind at ease, there is, I have received any number of inquiries, from brew pubs to cideries, to Texas steak houses, to food markets. I mean, there's interest in the building. And our vision is to have what I would refer to, as we refer to as a high-credit quality tenant or tenants, I frankly envisioned two tenants in the building, a high-credit quality set of tenants that go into that building. Not someone who says, you know, I've always wanted to open up a brew pub, I'd like to start it at the Wallingford Train Station. We want to have, because, you know, Counselor Lafferty, I appreciate what you're saying wholeheartedly, is that when government gets involved in leasing commercial space, it's a little bit of a discomfort area. But I would ask your consideration that the railroad station is an exception. We have this fantastic asset right in the sweet spot of our town center. We can lead by example by making it something special, and we'll have to work through, and I've had conversations with Chairman Savoni over time, about making sure that we can put together, you know, a process that legally distances us enough so that, you know, every time a light bulb goes out, some town department's not getting a phone call. We'll work through those details, but.
Well, that's not how a lease works.
It has been done before in many places, and I think we have a great opportunity to do it here.
I mean, a triple net lease, we wouldn't be responsible for lights anyway, so, I mean, that's, I'm just really concerned about, I don't, well, you know, again, that school that's there, is there, because you're involved in downtown, is there an area that's 7,000 square feet available? Or going to be available, because you're saying that's 60-something hundred square feet, so around at 7,000. Is there any place that you guys are going to be able to even on the, to move something of that size?
I think evaluating where the adult education program goes is a very high priority, as I said earlier, and we will endeavor to work with the Board of Education and the superintendent to find a suitable spot.
If I may, once again, I just have to reemphasize that this is a process. What we're asking for tonight is just approval to begin the process with the RFP. Adult ed is a major concern, it was a major concern when we first started this program. That's why one of the first stops we made was to the Education Department, to let them know what we were intending, to let them know where we're going. We had somewhat green light. But again, this is not an end-all vote tonight. All we're looking for tonight is the beginning of the process. An RFP to help answer a lot of the questions. As Tim answered earlier, we may get the RFP back and find out, hey, this was an interesting experiment, move on to the next project.
I have a feeling that's not going to happen, but the point is that I'm making, and I think, you know, she made over there from the Felded, that you're throwing, I understand you're going out for the RFP, but this is something that should be in place, or know what you're going to do with it, it's so important. And I'm not, I'm white also, everybody's white here, everybody's English-speaking, everybody was pretty much went to school. When you get another segment of the population that this school helps, immensely helps, we didn't grow up in that situation. This is so valuable to this segment of the population. I don't know if you fully understand how important it is, and I'm sure, whatever, Sue can, you know, masks, it's tough to tell. Yes, I do know who you are now. But it's so important, and this seems to be on a fast track, because the town doesn't move this quickly on anything. It seems like things are in place already, and I just don't have a good feeling about it, and I'm just, the only place that the school could potentially go downtown of this size would be the police station. And if that's doable, then that's a place for it, because it is in the center of the community. And that is a place where most people can get to, and they know where it is. It's not essentially on a bus line like Route 5, but we could always talk to the state about having buses move there. I mean, has that been discussed? I'm sure, because the police station has to have been discussed at some point.
If I could, I see buses come up South Main Street.
Yeah, but not to the.
And it's barely a block walk from there. And while we're talking about adult ed, I took the opportunity to tour the train station and see the adult ed program in action. And it's truly a wonderful, important, vital program that I'll support every opportunity I get. And I'm not sure how it got to be the way it is, if it came in there as one size and expanded to fill the whole building, but at this point, the way they take up every corner, it's almost shoehorned in there. And I have to believe that this is an opportunity to find a more optimal space for it.
Police station.
Well, and that may be the case. I mean, there would be timing issues associated with that, and then, of course, there's money. If you toured the police station, it needs beaucoup work, but.
There's grants for that.
I think that.
There's grants. We have a grant writer, so.
Sure. I think that there's support on the council to be concerned, people who will be concerned about where adult education ends up. We're not in any, none of us are interested in abandoning that program.
I'm not saying you're going to abandon it. It's the location of where it goes in the future is very important to the people who use that right now.
Yep.
That's the issue there.
Just, we're running out of time.
Yeah.
Just want to see if anybody else wants to speak. Please.
Sue Pearson, 25 Metler. Just wanted to say, Ms. Allenson, number one, when you mentioned about walking across the train tracks, they're not drinking. Normally, they're not drinking when they're walking across the train tracks. Right now, our students aren't, and they're not walking, after, we're talking about restaurants and brew pubs and all that, so this is one point. But the one thing I want to say, Mr. Ryan, is if you're bringing people in there, and I know you have already, bringing them in there to the Learning Center, if you'll be mindful of when there are students there, because there are confidentiality issues for those students, they don't all want everybody to know that they're going to school again when they're 40 years old. So, if you could just be mindful of making sure that it's not a class time, middle of the day, Saturday mornings, whatever. Thank you.
If I can just address that, so everybody is aware, including the last speaker, that we have brought people into the building on Fridays. We have worked very nicely with Sashi Govan, been extremely respectful of her space. I say to her all the time, it's your space, Sashi, it's not our space. So, we, Sashi has made the building available to us on Fridays, because there are no classes on Fridays, and that's when we've been going through the building with different people. So, it's all been very collaborative. No one just shows up and goes through the building, we're very aware, in respect.
One more? Yeah, why don't you let her speak?
Debbie Gross, Long Hill Road. Now, this RFP is, just so I make sure I understand, the RFP is just to get ideas of what to do to that building and what to put in that building, correct?
Well, not just ideas, but it would be a structural evaluation of the entire building. Well, not just ideas, but it would be a structural evaluation of the entire building, the mechanicals in the building, the HVAC systems, the electrical, all of the necessary upgrades for ADA compliance, evaluation of the roof structure, should we put new windows and doors in? So, you know, our vision is to take a look at that building as a town asset, which it is, and say, this is an opportunity, and a rare opportunity, and it's right in front of us now, to take and make that building itself a centerpiece.
Okay, so we put the RFP out there. Now, that RFP is with the town dollars, not the grant dollars, right? How does that work?
It does not cost anything to put an RFP out.
Well, you're going to put the RFP out, and you might engage in an organization that's going to look into the options.
Correct, so the next step would be, if, as we go through the process, we select the company to fulfill the RFP, then we come back to the council and say, this is who we selected, this is what it's going to cost us upfront to have them do the work, that we would hope that we would be, get reimbursed through the, through the grant.
Is that definitely something that's going to be reimbursed for the grant? Because some of that pre-work is not necessarily reimbursable in the grant, because it happened before the grant was awarded. So a lot of times, that is not allowed because of the timing of the expenditures, or it may not even be allowed because the grant doesn't allow for that.
It is my understanding that the, the RFP, or the engineering work, is in fact reimbursable through the grant.
Even though it was performed prior to the grant award?
Correct.
So if we do, we put out the RFP, and we award somebody the contract to do all this, right? And then we apply for the grant, and we don't get it. The burden of those expenses are going to be saddled with the town.
That is correct.
Okay. So say, let's take another scenario, we get the grant, we, and we did the RFP, and we're going to go forward, and the project is X. So what is the timeline of the grant? So we're awarded the grant January of next year, I'm just making up dates. So when do you have to have the project completed by? How, what's the timeline?
My recollection is, and I stress, my recollection is, we have two years to completely spend the money on the grant.
Okay, is that a consideration? Because being that the building is so old, it's historic, there's so many issues, getting contractors engaged, do you think that it's even conceivable to me a timeline like that?
Oh, yes, absolutely.
Okay. I mean, I guess we really don't know that, so you can say absolutely, but no one really knows, because we all know that we open up cans of worms sometimes, right? The other thing that I want to mention that maybe you guys aren't aware of, but in a project like this where you're taking a town building and you're turning it into something that's commercial, so to speak, or leasing it out, so it's not part of the mission of the town. What happens is, the income that we're receiving from that becomes taxable to the town. So I just want to make you aware that the income coming in is literally taxable to the federal government and state government. So I don't know if that's a consideration or not, but I just wanted to make you aware of that.
I would submit it's a very small price to pay for what could...
Well, it is and it isn't, right? Because, you know, you start doing things like that, and, you know, you're, while there's some good to it, I mean, what's the point of doing it if we're going to be taxed on it sometimes? So I just wanted to mention that, and I just wanted to understand the timeline. Thank you.
We're actually well over time.
One quickie, through the chair to the mayor. The mayor is up, Mr. Mayor, you've always been risk averse to taking on anything that were we potentially, meaning the town, has a liability. That was your reasoning for getting involved in the solar panels and all kinds of stuff around town. What's your position on this, where it potentially could become a bar or a restaurant with the train tracks and the parking lots and all that type of stuff? Is this something you're not risk adverse to?
Well, I don't know that I'm averse to all risk. I mean, we wouldn't be built, in the process of building a new police station, which will involve a lot of new risks, if you want to look at things in terms of just risk. But, this is municipal property, so whatever liabilities we have associated with the property will continue. There may be a nuance with a private party leasing space, but whether it's the parking lots or the building or the park, it's all municipal property, so I doubt there'll be any serious increase in liabilities.
You have three attorneys there, and I, and maybe I'm wrong, but if the town, if I owned a bar, and I, if I owned a building and I leased it to a bar, and there's an incident, somebody leaves drunk, somebody gets hit by a train, something happens, I'm going to be on that, am I going to, I'm going to be one of the people also sued because I'm owner of that building, and I'm allowed that business to operate there?
I'm not going to sue you, Mr. Gross, however...
I understand that, but you would sue the town.
That's what insurance is for.
I understand, but then we would become a party to it, thank you. And bars and that type of stuff has that problem, and the location is tough, thank you.
Thank you, bring it back to the council. Counselor Fishbein.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. What I just heard opens up a lot of questions for me, so please, essentially, right now, we have a property owned by the town that we think may be able to be used better for economic development in the downtown. It's almost like we have a shell, it's not occupied, right? We want to see, okay. So now, we're going out to the public to say, what do you envision this property being done with? Right? Or are we looking to rehab the property with the intention of then going to the public? That's what I'm trying to figure out first.
What we're looking for tonight is a vote on the RFP, which consists of getting a professional out there, not the public, a professional out there to go into the building, to give us an assessment of what it would cost the town to reestablish that building, to prepare it for lease, to bring it up to code, and all those other problems that were brought up, and to make their best suggestions of what they see at businesses that would be involved in the building. I want to make one thing perfectly clear, I know, we talk about restaurants, we talk about bars. Again, with all due respect, that's not part of tonight's conversation. Tonight's conversation is an RFP approval to find out what would, what would be a good project to go in there. They may come back and say, the only thing is eligible is a bar. Well, then we have to take pause and say, what is our risk? And what is the insurance factor? But that's a conversation, as far as I'm concerned, for another day. I mean, a lot of the conversations I'm hearing tonight is, we're looking to answer questions of situations that within a month from now may not have any bearing on anything we're doing today.
And that, but that's my concern, because then if you engage in improving the property, then maybe in some way, shape, or form, you're constraining the ability to use it for an alternative purpose. So, sometimes when we have properties that have a shell on them, we put up a sign, we'll build the suit, right? And we say to the public, what would you like to see there? And we'll build it for you.
Could I interrupt you one minute?
Yeah.
Because I think you're going down the wrong road. We're not going to build to suit. What we're going to do is rehab it, bring it up to code, and then we're going to lease it to whoever's going in, they could rebuild it to suit.
Okay. So, why do we need to have part of this RFP suggestions of what it could be, when, why not just let the marketplace do that? So, for an example, in the next six months, we have a nice Italian restaurant opens up somewhere downtown, right? At that time, a good usage for that property might be a bakery that makes Italian bread, or bread that the restaurant can use. The RFP doesn't envision that, because the restaurant isn't there yet, right? So, don't you just bring the property up to code, and then just put it out to the marketplace and say, you know, we have this property, it's up to code, we'd like to rent it, you know, come, bring us your ideas, right? Because you could put a dressing store there too, right? It doesn't have to be a food establishment, there's all different kinds of things, right? So, I have no problem bringing it up to code. I just, I'm a little concerned about going further than that, which may constrain, you know, somebody thinking outside the box.
Yeah, just suggestions, and how we could best market it. But again, as you said, if the scenario with the Italian restaurant and bakery comes to fruition, then the marketplace will take its place.
Okay, so a minor portion of this RFP is suggestions, is that fair to say?
Yeah, I would say so.
Okay, so then the RFP goes out, the results come back, who makes the decision?
I'd like to say me, but no.
There's a small group in town that we, that have met. It includes our town engineer, includes our Director of Public Works, the purchasing agent, myself, the marketing committee of the EDC, and someone, John Walworth, who is something that we've, we've asked to assist us in the process.
And they would make the decision on whether or not certain aspects of this to bring up to code should be done?
I think they, we would make the decision as to who we would select for the RFP, and then we bring it back to the council, hopefully on March the 8th.
Okay, and that's like step one?
Correct.
Ultimately, what this property gets used for, who's making that determination?
The marketplace.
Well, but, okay, the marketplace in conjunction with whom? Does that come to, I guess it's a lease with the town property, so we have to approve?
Yep, yep.
Mayor.
At least, at the point, it's a lease. Right, it could be before that to get some other questions answered, or people comfortable, but we won't be able to lease it without the town council approving a lease.
Yeah, I just, you know, I just want to say now that I at least, and I know most of the people up here, want to be part of that process. We don't, I don't want to see on an agenda, here's a lease, it's the only lease, you know, that kind of stuff. So I'm just throwing that out there now, please.
Understood.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Counselor Testa.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I don't, I don't want to get into too much of trying to take, do the job of the Board of Education, because deciding what to do with adult ed is going to be their job, researching, we're here to support, of course, and approve, but that's their, their responsibility and expertise. But I just want to ask a couple of questions in general. First of all, what, do you know roughly what the usable square footage is that they use right now? I think I was redundant with usable. How much square foot do they use or need, roughly?
I can only say that the railroad station right now is 6,400 square feet.
Total, or just one floor?
Total, and whether they use it all or not, I'm not exactly sure.
Okay. Here's just a shot in the dark, just out of nowhere. Rob Veltromid is here? Still, hey, Rob. Or does anybody know what the square footage is of the garage in the parking lot next door, the old carriage house?
I have no idea.
Considerably smaller.
It's considerably smaller? Because it's, well, it's, it's pretty, two stories, that's why I asked. Okay, I'm just, before I, I'm not making any suggestions, I just wanted to think about that a little outside of the box. Also, we've talked about expanding the utilization of the facility at SCOW. Just off the top, is there, is there any possibility that there's a usable space at SCOW? For the adult ed programs? Board might know that, someone might, remember, we just talked about expanding, remember? Into the back.
I happen to have the opportunity to be at SCOW recently, and I think they're using all the space, plus, and the level below is the new STEM center that is about to open. So I don't, I don't think there's that kind of...
I just, just, I don't want to throw it out there. So we're talking about 6,000 or so, 6,400 square feet? Okay, this is just something for me as I look around town or think about ideas. What's that? Yeah, I know, all the model guys downstairs, yeah. Okay, that's it for now, thank you.
Thank you. All right, that appears to be all from the council. Madam Clerk, would you please call them a roll?
Allenson?
Yes.
Harmady?
No.
Fishbein?
Yes.
Laffin?
Yes.
Verone?
Yes.
Tada?
Yes.
Testa?
Yes.
And Chairman Servoni?
Oh, Counselor Zandry.
Oh, I'm so sorry. I apologize.
It's all right. Yes. And I'll take my turn now.
Okay.
Yes. Thank you.
Thank you for your support.
Thank you, good night.
On to item eight, which is discussion regarding an approval regarding redistricting. Do we have, we have registrars here? We have one. Mr. Chairman, I'm going to...
Rob's coming.
Oh. Make an attempt to make a motion, and the registrars can correct me if I'm not getting it right. I move that we approve the redistricting of voter districts, in that a small section of the 8th district that was in the 90th and is now in the 85th district to be added to the 2nd district, and that the large district created by the state legislature, as of the former 9th district, be split into the 1st and the 9th local districts, dividing it along East Center Street after Interstate 91 to Whirlwind Hill Road, then to the Durham border, making the north top part of the 9th district, and the south bottom part of the 1st district. That's the essence, can we have a second?
Second.
That was seconded in by Counselor Allenson. If you can, tell us who you are for the record, please, and then tell us what, what this is all about.
Joan Ives Perici, registrar voters.
Rob Avery, registrar of voters.
Okay, well, the first part, the district, 8th district, that was moved from the 90th district to the 85th, that was, oh, sorry, that was something that was done, that was something that was done by the state legislature, and that is something that we have to do by law. We felt that going into the 2nd district was the most easily done for us, as far as moving people. The second part with District 1 and 9, District 1 was always Benny Candelaro's district, so it didn't affect us, and it is now part of the 90th district. And because before I was registrar, I was moderator at Rock Hill School, that was District 9, we had people living on the border of North Haven that had to travel all the way to Rock Hill to vote. So, for many years, I heard many complaints, and now we have the opportunity to correct that as best we can in splitting that district horizontally, so that anyone from Whirlwind Hill South would go to Pond Hill to vote, and everyone above that area would go to Rock Hill. So, we're in, and at the moment, we're discussing on even moving Rock Hill to another location, because it's actually not in district. So, that is our proposal, and we're trying to make voting for the people in the 9th and 1st districts easier. They won't have as far to travel, and it'll be easier for them to cast their votes. So that, that's, that's the reasoning behind this second piece.
So, we're really talking about the 90th and the 85th State House districts, am I right about that?
That's correct.
Okay. And so, I mean, to put it most simply, with these corrections, we're not going to have to have, if, this November, when we have elections for those two seats?
Correct.
We're not going to have to have... We're not going to have to have two different ballots at any of the districts.
No, District one and District nine, and seven and eight will all be the ninetieth district, that's correct.
The rest will be the eighty-fifth.
The eighty-fifth will be two, three, four, and five. District six is Representative Lena Hands.
Okay. All right, thank you. I know Counselor Fishbein has questions.
Yeah, so looking at the area that, the North Cherry Street area that has come out of the ninetieth and going to the eighty-fifth, your correspondent says it could go to the second or the third, because I think it borders on both, right?
Correct.
And your proposal is that it goes to the second, why?
You can answer that?
Close to the mic, please.
It just looked like a more reasonable extension of two. I mean, technically, we could divide it between two, three, and five.
If you could move the microphone closer to you, the camera's not hearing you.
So, so why not? Or why not split it between? Why did you decide to leave that portion as a whole and just make it part of two? Is there some sort of numerical reason? Is there, it's just a dartboard?
No, it's just, it's easier to just pick it and attach it to one other district. If we split it up and attach it to three different districts, it makes an awful lot of more work and more confusion, and it doesn't solve anything. Because there's no rule about number of voters per district or anything like that.
Sure, so just based upon your answer, it's not based upon any numeric value, it's just, we thought it looked good.
Right.
Right?
Yep.
So in District two, where do people vote?
District two votes in Stevens.
Stevens School, yeah.
Okay, and do you even know how many people are in this block that you would be increasing Stevens School by? Because we have to deal with, can the establishment deal with an influx of people, right? That would be a consideration to allowing people to vote. I mean, because I get people at Rock Hill who walk away all the time. I'm not dealing with these lines, there's too many people here, right? So if you're just taking this block and throwing it at Stevens without any numbers, how do I know you're not creating that problem at Stevens?
Well, at this point, Stevens doesn't have any problems now.
Agreed.
So if we added a few hundred more people to it, I don't think it'll change it. But we can't, there's no way for us to determine how many voters are in this area.
Wait a second. There's no way?
I didn't say, I didn't finish.
You said, okay.
Without an enormous amount of work.
Okay, well, when does this have to be done by?
It has to be done for the next election.
Okay.
Because the people who vote for the legislature in November will be voting for their new representative.
Sure, and if we're creating a problem, we're the ones that are going to hear about it, not you guys, right? So I mean, I could go through and get your list, and I've got whole streets here. I've got Duncan Street, you know, the whole of Duncan Street, I've got Welcome Street, the whole, Stella, Cass, Kovacs, Fourth. Everyone on your list that's registered to vote on those particular streets, you count, right? That doesn't take that long. It's the border that you'd have difficulty, perhaps, right?
Correct.
But most of these, there's a lot of little streets in here, right?
There are not, there's not a large amount of voters that we would be moving.
Okay, so that was
Yeah.
That was one of the questions that I had, and I heard that we don't know how many voters.
Don't know the exact number, no.
Right, but there aren't, there are not that many.
Just three hundred, four hundred?
Yep, probably three hundred at most.
Okay. And
So you would be making that equal to District four, which is DiCamischold.
Okay, and presently, these people voted the eighth, correct? Just looking at this block.
Yes.
Right?
Yes, and that's the senior center.
Agreed.
Correct.
So that would reduce that, if we use the three hundred number, by about that, which would bring that somewhat in line with some other districts.
Correct.
Okay.
Right, and that, but now we're adding Masonic.
Well, that's not part of your motion here, and that's
That's part of what the state did, the state did that.
I don't care, what the state did, the state did. You've presented us the changes, right? You haven't even addressed that area that you were just referring to.
The only reason that we are addressing the eighth district, moving to the eighty-fifth, is because we had to determine where we felt those voters should move to. The legislature has already determined that the Ashler Village Masonic area is in the ninetieth district.
Okay.
That has nothing, that's from the state. The only reason we came with the eighth, the eighth district change was because we had to determine where to move those people to.
Okay, I understand what you're saying. But that area is the same thing as the area that's addressed in the B section of this item. That was all done by the state, right? Came out of the eighty-fifth and is going into the ninetieth, right?
No, no, District one wasn't even part of the ninetieth.
Yeah, the state doesn't do internal districts, okay?
Right, but I'm saying that area where Representative Candelaro had
We're not talking about that.
That became part of the ninetieth.
Yeah, hold on. Talking about the area to the easterly side of ninety-one, where Edgerton Road and that area is right now part of the eighty-fifth. We established this the last time we talked about this. We established this during the meetings that we had about this.
Right.
Okay? And as a result of the state's redistricting, it said it's not going to be in the eighty-fifth, it's going to be part of the ninetieth, right? The first or the ninth locally, the state had nothing to do with.
Right.
Right?
Correct.
So your B section of what's before us here today is exactly like Ashler Village.
Why?
Because the state said Ashler Village is not going to be in the eighty-sixth anymore, it's going to be in the ninetieth.
Yes.
It did the same exact thing.
No.
Why not?
Because we are not moving Ashler Village.
You're supposed to be, though.
Yeah, you're not, let me finish?
Go, no.
We're not moving it, the state legislature moved it.
Okay, and what happened?
That's those directions that we got from the state.
Can I see those directions? You have something in writing from the state that says the Edgerton Road section that came out of the eighty-fifth and went to the ninetieth, by action of the state,
Yeah.
is different than Ashler Village, which came out of the eighty-sixth and went to the ninetieth. You're telling me there's something in writing from the Secretary of State's office that says those two things are supposed to be treated differently?
What I'm saying is the only reason that we came to you with the eighty-fifth was because we had three different districts we could have put those people into.
We dealt with this area, North Cherry Street, right? We've already talked about that.
Yes.
That can go to the second or the third. We've discussed why it's your choice that it should go to the second, right?
Correct.
We've disposed of that.
Yes.
Okay? The other area that you're addressing by B, you're saying cut a line across the existing one and nine to make one the southerly, nine the northerly.
Correct.
Okay. And as part of one, the southerly, that is expanding
Yes.
to include what is presently part of the eighty-sixth. Your agenda item includes that, because you say to the east of ninety-one. Right now, to the east of ninety-one is part of the eighty-sixth. Yes, it is.
The legislature changed it.
Right now
Right, and right now, it's still Vinnie Candelaro's district.
No, right now, no. Right now, that area is part of the eighty-sixth, represented by Mary Mashinsky.
No, and Mary Mashinsky's
How much you want to bet on this one?
Mary Mashinsky is the eighty-fifth district.
Yeah, the eighty-fifth
Yes.
is, when you look at ninety-one, I mean, I wish you had brought the map here tonight. And Bob, you and I have talked about this.
I know, but
When you get down to the end of ninety-one
That was not our decision.
I don't care whose decision it was.
It was the state.
And why are you here tonight? You wouldn't even be here unless the state did some things, right? That's the whole reason why you're here tonight, right?
Well, the other reason is because we wanted to make the change with District nine and District one to make it more palatable for people to vote.
I got it, I understand. I mean, I've spent tons of time working on this. Presently, when you come down ninety-one, you're looking at the map in your office. At the bottom, there's a triangle to the east of ninety-one that is in the eighty-fifth, Mary Mashinsky's area. As part of redistricting, and as is contemplated by your agenda item, that would become part of the first, right?
Yes.
Everything to the east of ninety-one on the lower section becomes part of the first, right? That's what your, that's what your agenda item says.
Right, but technically, now, the first doesn't exist.
No, the first exists until we get rid of it, because the state doesn't have anything to do with internal districts.
Correct.
Oh, okay.
Okay? We've spent a lot of time talking about this. So the question is, since the state moved that portion out of the eighty-sixth, and by your action, you are moving that into the ninetieth by making it part of the local District one, why isn't the agenda item addressing Ashler Village also, which by action of the state, becomes part of the ninetieth?
We, we don't have the state has told us that everything east of the ninety-five
Ashler Village isn't east of the ninety-five.
I'm talking about the eighty-fifth district. That bottom corner is now part of the ninth district.
I've said that fourth time, yeah, four times.
And the state has told us that this little circle of Ashler Village was taken out of the
Sixth district.
Sixth district, and put into the eighth.
Actually, it was in the hundred and third.
I mean, hundred and third, yeah, okay.
And now it's in the ninetieth.
Yeah, we didn't do that.
So as a result of that, you have to change the local district. Otherwise, if I lived in, under your present local district area, if I lived in Ashler Village, what district am I in? I'm in District four.
No.
I'm in District four, I'm going to Parker Farms to vote.
No, you're in District five.
No, only because we haven't had the time to go in there and change all of those places, because we want to do it in one shot. We don't want to go in and change this
That's exactly my point.
Go change the
Why aren't you doing this in one shot? Because you're not dealing with Ashler Village in this agenda item.
We didn't have to come to you before the It's up to the council to approve what the state has sent down.
No, we don't have to approve, it's decreed.
It's up to you to make a decision
Yep, once
on what to do with what was sent down from the state.
Once the state says, this is the ninetieth, this is the eighty, the hundred and first, this is the eighty-sixth, we can do anything that we want internally, anything. We can make twenty-five thousand districts if we want, okay? The state does not dictate the internal districts. So right now, Ashler Village, I think, would have to go to, as you currently have it mapped out, the eighth, right? Because it doesn't border on the seventh, and it doesn't, and it can't go to a district that services the eighty-sixth, it would have to go to the eighth, right? Right?
Correct.
So, and I heard we want to do this all at once, why isn't, and we suggest moving Ashler Village into the eighth district part of the agenda item? That's ultimately the punchline.
Because we don't think that's even an option. The state said this is now part of this district. So now we will change it internally to be part of that district.
You can't change it without us. We are the ones that determine the districts internally. So you're asking us to make certain changes. Why don't you just do everything at once, and we get to the next question? Since, I know everything isn't here. Why can't you guys, your office, figure out if a line was here, what the numbers would be? Why, because I know other towns, like, a whole legislative district disappeared for the forty-fifth district, right, and it went to Stamford. There's got to be some way those people are crunching numbers. You can't tell me they're starting fresh.
If you said to me, everybody in the first district is now in the ninth district, that's easy. But when you start taking little pieces and saying, this one goes here, and this one goes here, there's no computer program that you just push these numbers in and you get answers.
Well, why can't you do a projection? We do that a lot of times, there's some sort of specialized word for it, where you sort of, you put it in, you see what it spits out, and then you have, yeah, I think they call them projections, right? You know, this is what would happen if we put the line here, and this is what would happen if we put I mean, District nine, you guys know, is what, six times the size of District one?
An area, sure.
Yes.
And, you know, with all due respect to the powers that be, the reason why that is is because of laziness. Nobody wanted to look at these numbers. And I'm just trying to get, so people don't get frustrated and walk away.
Okay, so if I, if I just may interject, dealing with Ashler Village, bringing it to you, it wasn't oversight. I mean, I, it didn't even occur to me that that piece had to come to you because it was directed, it was drawn by the state. The only reason we came to you with, with the district, with the eighth district, was because we had three places to move it to, and we needed permission from you to put it where we would like to. And then the one and the nine was just to make it more palatable for the voters in those two districts. It did, honestly, did not occur to me.
No, I know, Joan, I mean, I've talked to Bob a bunch of times about this. I know, and I, I know. I just, I'd like to see this done right the first time, and I know, and I told Bob this, the Secretary of State's office is going to communicate to you guys and ask you if you have any issues with the present map, because I know there's a problem in Ashler Village. They took one street, and they left it part of the hundred and third, and the whole rest of it's in the ninetieth.
Right.
Yeah, they haven't said anything yet.
Yeah, so, well, my understanding is, did you call up there and ask them?
Not about this, no.
It's hard to get someone up there, Craig, because they're all working from home.
No, I understood, but other, every other town is dealing with this. And this is the only town I've heard of that they can't do projections. There's got to be
I called this Secretary of State, computer people, again today, and they told me they know no way to do that.
Do you, I mean, I know with the, we have listservs and that kind of stuff, I don't know, I know the town clerk's office has
Well, we can, we can run voters by street. How many voters are on that street.
Yeah, so, I mean, that would be helpful, because then you can get projections. You know, if we put this street into this district, then this district changes. I mean, I, I think we got plenty of time here
Okay.
to get this done right, so that another ten, I mean, you guys, you must get calls, right?
Yes.
So I don't know how to proceed, I mean, I've done everything that So I don't know how to proceed, I mean, I've done everything that I, you know, Bob, you and I have had, what, ten, ten talks about this thing? I don't know if we end up doing a commission again, or, or committee, or, or, or what, but.
If you want us to take this back, and then come to you with the Ashler Village and the District Two movement, I mean, we can, we'll come back with numbers.
I would like to see the one street in Ashler Village issue resolved.
Okay, and that has to come from the Secretary of State.
Understood, understood, so, you know, I, with all due respect, I mean, if I got to call Denise, you know, I think, Sam, come on.
Don't you have a little pull, Sam?
Get some permission to get that one street solidified, right? And then come to us with a whole package, and I, I, I know that there's others up here that want to see some numbers, you know, this is where we'd end up. And then if we can do that with enough time, maybe appropriate some money for some mailings, and get the public to know.
Right.
I mean, how much, that's like such a great thing, so.
Yeah, because everybody, they're going to have to know way ahead of time.
Oh, absolutely, and we'll pump it out there and all that stuff, but, you know. So, I, I don't know, I, I throw it back.
Did you point at me?
Yeah, I'm sorry, with both hands.
Wow, Counselor Todd, I know you want to speak, but it sounds to me like you've got some more work to do, and this will come back before us?
Yes, yes.
You want a committee? Do you want us, somebody to work with?
We'll be able to do this.
Okay, I go.
We'll, we'll be fine.
Counselor Todd.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, that, that was going to be my suggestion, um, maybe come back or retable this, and, um.
You know, give us a month.
Yeah.
Because we're in the middle of a canvas, which is really time-consuming.
One, one thing I would like to see, though, would be, um, the populations, because I, even, and I don't, I think some of it may have been addressed with this, but I know, um, you know, like, the ninth is, population-wise, so much bigger than some of the other districts, so I'm hoping we can fix that at the same time.
Right, and moving, moving the line where we want to.
Yeah.
Is going to move a few peo, you know.
Yeah.
Several voters down into the first district.
Yeah, I mean.
And then that other section comes over.
I just think it's, you know, better, I think it would be better to have it more based on population and geographic, I mean, geographic, geography is obviously important, too, for where people are voting, but, um, I know we have like that, the huge ninth right now, so, um, I, that's what I was just going to suggest, and maybe when you come back, we could look at some of the numbers, too, that'd be helpful. Thank you.
Sure.
All right, so, uh, we can withdraw the motion?
I withdraw the motion.
Did you second? And Counselor Allenson withdraws her second, and we will see you again.
Okay.
Thank you.
You're welcome. We'll let you know, we should be ready, and we should be able to do this in a month.
Good. We'll look forward to seeing you then. Onto item nine, which is discussion regarding the twenty-twenty, twenty-twenty-one fiscal year independent audit and comprehensive annual financial report. Counselor Todd, this is your item.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman, sorry, sorry, Mr. Sun, it's almost ten o'clock now. But I just, I know we, um, it's the second year in a row now, and I know you were not comptroller last, uh, last year, but, um, it's the second year in a row now that the audit has been delayed. And I did see, um, your reason for the request was staffing shortage, um, which I know you've, it's not the first time you've told us you're having staffing shortages in your office. I guess I just wanted to find out, you know, what's going on, and I don't remember what the reason was for the extension last year. I'm, I'm assuming it was probably pandemic-related, but I don't recall, so I don't know if you know that, but, um, I guess I just wanted to kind of get an update from you on what's going on, and, my other concern with it being late again is that I know, um, obviously, you have the financials every month, and we see those, but I know departments are starting to budget now, in January, and so I think, um, because the administration typically tells us, you know, we, we use the CAFR, that's our, our final number, so I just think it might be difficult for departments that are trying to work on their budgets, that they don't have their, their final numbers yet, so, yeah, basically, I just wanted to ask you, you know, what's, what's the status now, is everything going okay? Are we going to need another extension, or will we have it by the end of this month? Thank you.
Good evening. So, the reason for the extension in the previous year was we did not get the information for the actuaries in time to get it into the report.
Yep, I remember that now.
So the reason this year is, I did not have the staff to get what I needed done to the auditors, to get them to turn it around. We are, right now, on track to have the report issued by the end of this month.
Thank you.
So, and, you know, just to give you an updated staff level, since the last time we were talking about it, I have a payroll person that has been hired and is working. I have an apprentice accountant that's starting the first week in February. I just completed the interviews for treasurer and made an offer today. And I just received the list for the deputy comptroller. I think the first week in January, I have the interviews scheduled. So we are making progress.
Okay, great, that's, that's great to hear, I'm happy. And I, I don't know if you can speak to this, but I know, like I said, departments are working on their budgets currently, is this, does this hinder their ability, or do they just use, are they more using, like, do they know where they fell last year based on your reports, or do they need to wait for this? Because I know a lot of times we're told, you know, we wait for this, these are the final numbers, are they, is this hindering them at all?
I don't believe it's hindering them for their budget, they have their final June reports. And then, you know, fortunately, I'm a little behind in the budget preparation due to the same reason, but I, I don't foresee having trouble getting that done. If anyone, all the department heads, if they needed information that they were working on, I would be able to get it to them.
Great, all right, well, thank you so much, I appreciate that, and, um, I'm glad, it sounds like your office is getting, getting more staff, so, because I know it's been an issue for you for a few months, so.
I appreciate it.
I'm glad to hear that, thank you so much. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Questions from other counselors? And I'm guessing the remaining members of the public don't have questions. So with that, uh, moving on to item ten.
Mr. Chairman, I imagine, or I know there are going to be amendments, but I want to get everything started with a motion, so I would like to move that we adopt the new twenty-twenty-two council rules document.
Second, Allenson.
Moved and seconded, I know there is some discussion that's coming on this. Counselor Marone.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman, I'll go quick, uh, so I have two, uh, potential amendments.
Not so quick that the clerk can't keep up with you.
Understood. So, uh, the first one is Article Seven, uh, where it sets a deadline for the, it has to be twelve-thirty, uh, of Tuesday, which I understand is, is intended to correspond with the agenda meeting.
I think that's actually six.
I'm sorry?
That's actually Article Six.
Yep, I'm bad at Roman numerals, so, let me put that out there, so, um, uh, so I think it's supposed to correspond with your agenda meeting. Uh, so my thought was, um, there's been some consternation on the council about, you know, the, uh, adding of amendments to the, to the, um, to the agenda, and it would just be nice to get some more time, so my suggestion would be to amend that, to, instead of Tuesday, to say Thursday.
So, in response to that, I understand what you're trying to do, and, um, I would suggest that we leave the twelve-thirty Tuesday there and add that, um, you know, addendums can be added until noon on Thursday.
Okay, so then I'll make the motion, uh, at the end of paragraph one in Article Six, to add a sentence that says, addendums can be added till noon on Thursday.
Moved and seconded, actually, that's, yes. That's a motion and second on the amendment to Counselor Laffin's motion.
Right.
I accept the amendment if that saves us time.
I second the amendment.
Okay. I don't think Counselor Marone's done yet.
I have one more. Is that on the, is that on the, on the amendment, Craig, or is that?
Yeah, it's on the amendment. I'm not, yeah, um, I'm just trying to figure out, so, someone contacts the chairman and says, oh, I know it's after Tuesday at twelve-thirty, I would like an addendum. Is it that communication that has to be done by Thursday? Or is it the issuance of the addendum?
No, the communication by Thursday noon, and then that'll give us, I think that still leaves us enough time to publish the amended agenda, um, well before the meeting.
Okay, so that, it's intended that the agenda that was previously issued on Wednesday would be reissued to include the new item?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Counselor Marone, I think you have more.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, just one more, um, this is, uh, item, or Article Seventeen, consent agenda, uh, not seventeen, fourteen, I did it again. And can I get one of my kids here to help me out with this? So. Uh, so, fourteen, uh, under procedure, the letter B, uh, so it says each counselor should review the entire consent agenda at his or earliest convenience, and then any problems that arise regarding an item on the consent agenda should first be taken up with the mayor. I'd, uh, like to strike the second sentence, or my motion is to strike the second sentence, uh, base, on the basis that, you know, there's sometimes when I do feel the need to speak, speak with the mayor and get his take on something, there's sometimes I've already spoken to the department head, or maybe I just feel like it needs a public hearing, and, um, uh, you know, I know we could kind of put it on in any, in any context, but I'm not sure this language is necessary.
Was that a motion?
That was a motion.
I will second that, um, and if I, if I may add, Mr. Chairman, if that is going to happen, we should probably remove in a letter C, if, after following step B above.
Yes.
That first line there.
Well, um.
Well, I guess, yeah.
The line was, yeah.
I guess it can stay, because you're, you're leaving the first sentence. Okay, then I, I'll second it without that.
Okay. Okay, Counselor Testa. Mayor?
Just a little confused, what's the talk about checking with the mayor?
There, in, in Rule fourteen B, there's currently, if there's an, a, a, a consent agenda item, it says, any problems or questions that arise regarding the item on consent agenda should first be taken up with the mayors if a satisfactory answer is not obtained.
Yeah, I, I think you probably should take that out, I don't think it's ever happened.
We, we have consensus in the room. Counselor Testa, you've been patient. Oh, so we're solving another problem? We are solving a semantic problem. Uh, no, the sentence, second sentence in B.
Okay, Mr. Chairman, I accept it as a friendly amendment.
We, we, we should, we should, because, um, it might be something in the very, very foreseeable future. That's correct.
Mr. Chairman, I.
I'm also, Mr. Chairman.
Accept that amendment as a friendly amendment.
I second that.
Okay. Uh, and then I see Counselor Todd's hand.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm not, I'm not making a motion on this, but I do want to discuss it, because this was a change that we made with the last council. So in, it's discussed in, I'll work out these numbers, right, uh, Roman numeral four, and then again in, uh, twelve A four and twelve B three, uh, what refers to workshops, and we had changed it during the last council. Before, before that council, there was not public comment during workshops. And we changed it last, with the last rules, to include public comment in workshops, which effectively eliminated workshops, because then every meeting just becomes a meeting or a special meeting. So, I'm not sure if this council feels the same way, if we still want to retain the workshop format where there is not public comment, or if we want to leave it alone, and, I mean, basically, we eliminated workshops, is what happened effectively with the last one. So I don't know if we want to change the wording to take out workshop format, or if we want to go back to the way it was prior. I just wanted to, again, I'm not making a motion, I just want to see what everyone's thoughts are about that.
Well, in, in, um, twelve four, it does distinguish and say that if we're interviewing, um, an appointee that we call a special meeting, and it'll be in a workshop forum, format, and members of the public do not participate. So there is that exception there in.
Yeah, I was just thinking it conflicts with, um, Roman numeral four, the last line there. I guess that's why I pointed out all those, because I think those, the two, the two under twelve seem to conflict with Roman numeral four. So Roman numeral four is where it's set out, and then, if we were to change Roman numeral four, I don't know if those two are now in conflict. I'm sorry, if we were not to change Roman numeral four.
Actually, we could solve the problem by addressing that last line that was added last term. And, um, in addition to Section twelve, uh, B three, add twelve A four. So we can.
Right, yep.
Are you moving that we add Section twelve A four to that line?
Um, I would, but I just want to make sure that everyone is good with keeping the format the same, where the public can speak at workshops.
So by, by way of example, I think we're remembering a budget workshop where there was extensive public participation. Sound right? The question becomes, do we want to keep having extensive public participation in budget workshops?
Do not recall that, I just, I do recall when we created these rules, that there was a lot of discussion about whether we keep the workshop format or not. I mean, I'm fine with keeping it, I don't, it doesn't. I think, I, I, I don't want to put words in your mouth, but I kind of remember, Counselor Testa, you said at one point back then that the workshop is sometimes a little more effective, because we can, it's more conversational, and doesn't follow, and I, I just remember having the discussion, so I wanted to make sure that this new council, since there's new people, understands what, what that change was about. So previously, the workshops did not have public comment, and it was more conversational and casual, um, and we would have those, you know, well, we wouldn't, I was not there on occasion, and then we changed it, um, so that every single meeting has public comment, um, which basically eliminates the workshop, so everything would just go to a special meeting. So just so that the new, the newcomers are aware of what that was, in case you wanted to go back to the old way.
I think Counselor Testa wants to answer your question.
Right.
The idea was, you, first of all, public comment was always, uh, considered appropriate for an action item. We make a motion, we discuss, public comment, blah, blah, blah. So workshops were designed for us to just, to not take action. There was never any motions allowed at workshops. That's what made it a workshop. It was just an opportunity to, for us to ask questions, to, to get our own information. So if you think about it, it just, it always comes through from the budget. There's a public hearing, right? The public can ask the department questions. Then the workshops were for us to ask the department's questions. Not propose changes, just ask questions. Then, the meetings where we would take, we would propose actions, those would involve motions that, of course, would invite public comment. But frankly, frankly, it's a very touchy subject, um, I got a little flack, because, you know, anything that appears where you're, uh, you're, you're trying to limit public involvement, I mean, that's, that's not good. And that's understandable, it's clearly understandable, but, um, it does make it difficult to hold an informational workshop. You know, I mean, I, I think the way we have it now. You're probably better off opening yourself up to meetings getting a little out of hand sometimes, rather than giving the impression that you, you know, you don't want public input, because that's not fair, and I, I'm not in favor of that. But it's also why I probably, I avoid the workshops. Well, no.
Do we get that? Just pick a side, Cameron.
No, honestly, because if I don't have a question, if I don't have a question of a department, why be there? Why ask, why, you know, that's another story, I should stop.
Point of information, Mr. Chairman, and I should know all this, so I apologize, but, so a workshop, there's no public comment, but the notice requirements are all the same as a regular meeting, correct? It was a special meeting?
Yeah, we, we had been, until the last term, we had been operating a workshop as basically a council meeting, it's still a council meeting, but the workshop format is just a little more relaxed and didn't involve public participation so much, they could watch, but they weren't necessarily allowed to cut in.
So the virtual budget meetings we had last year were workshops or were special meetings? They were all special meetings?
They were all special meetings, because they really, they really don't, they're really not a workshop format.
So the only issue is then a workshop, though, has no quorum requirement, correct?
No, if it's a meeting of the council, it still has a quorum requirement.
Oh, okay, okay.
Yes.
It's all a special meeting, right?
Yep.
You still have to come.
Any meeting with you guys is special.
Okay, Counselor Allenson, you were waving before. Oh, I mean, do you want to wrap up before, or do you want to talk about?
Oh, I was just going to ask where.
Counsel Allenson can go in, but I, yeah, I'll make a motion at the end, so.
I, I don't have any more questions, I was like, so wait, wait, what? Because I, I got confused because we were talking workshops did or didn't have public comment and should we, whatever, so I think I'm, I am clear now, and thank you very much.
The Thursday thing? No, that, that was, well.
It's amended.
It, the, it was, it was accepted as a friendly amendment. Tuesday, it's published on Wednesday.
Your microphone. I thought we're at a workshop. You make the agenda item on Wednes, on Tuesday. We need to, we've always had this, we need to get our request for agenda items into you by twelve thirty, so you could have your meeting with the mayor at two thirty or whatever.
One o'clock.
One o'clock, however, that's pretty quick. And, and then you put the agenda together and it goes out. So this amendment now will allow us to continue to add agenda items if it, something occurs to us on Wednesday and Thursday. I don't understand why.
Well, it, I, I'd been allowing the administration to add administrative items and amending the agenda, and this gives the council the same ability.
Okay.
Sure.
My concern was, I guess there's two mechanisms, really, to add an item to the meeting, right? Is we request an agenda item or we waive a rule five. So the problem with the waiver of rule five is then the public doesn't get a chance to know that the item's coming, right? So I would rather have, just to give a little extra time to notice it and then have a legitimate item and give the, the administration or whomever time to prepare, as opposed to waiving rule five on the day of the meeting and then spring it on everybody. So that was, that was the rationale behind my, my thought.
Got you.
All right. Counselor Todd, why don't you wrap up your thing?
Yeah.
Before we go talking about other things again.
Okay, so in, then in re.
If we're going on to a different, I just.
We're not, we're going back to her.
We're going back to what I was talking about five minutes ago.
So we can still talk about the Thursday thing, right? Because we never voted on it, okay.
Okay. So back to item four. So then, it doesn't sound like anybody wants to change it, and I don't particularly want to change it, but I will make a motion that then we add to Roman numeral, Roman numeral four, at the end of the line, section twelve A four, because it looks like that should have always been in there, because that references the workshops also. So it would be, except as noted in section twelve B three and twelve A four.
Can I second and accept it as a friendly amendment all at once?
Yes.
Okay.
And apparently, that's what you just did.
I did it.
I, I second that also.
Okay. So that's an amendment. Counselor Fishbein, you wanted to talk about Thursday lunch.
Yeah, I guess the concern that Counselor Testa brings up is the line gets moved from Tuesday to Thursday, and that just becomes very cumbersome. So I think there has to be some sort of gatekeeper function in there. So you can only do an amendment after the Tuesday deadline if you show reasonable, you know, some sort of proof as to why you couldn't get it in for Tuesday, right? Because otherwise, you're going to get a bunch of stuff Thursday morning, and we're going to say, well, okay, this is what the rules say.
I think that is brilliant.
Oh. Thank you. All right, so however you want to put that in there.
So Counselor Marone, where did you put that change? Roman numeral thirty-six?
I believe that was.
It's the Roman numeral six, yeah.
Yep. So, and you were putting that sentence at the end of?
Into paragraph one.
Paragraph one, and so we would add something like, with, with good cause for the late amendment?
So moved.
Second and accepted as a friendly amendment.
And seconded as a friendly amendment.
Okay. Counselor Testa, do you still want to talk about Thursdays? Okay. Any other proposals? And I don't see any interest from, oh. Is that? You could just give us your name and address for the record, please.
Joe Sanders, forty-three Piper Drive, where the plowing is still good even though Finney's not our neighbor. So, you know, just a thought, in terms of the challenges of workshops and all of that, it's certainly commendable to do things in the open and try to involve public, why not give yourselves the option of having Q and As if you want input on stuff? Just a thought.
Thank you, because right now, we get them all anyway. If there's nothing else from the council, then the motion is on the table, it's been, the amendments have been accepted by the mover, so we can approve this, instead of going through each amendment, you can approve this with one vote. Does anybody have any objection to that? All right, there being none, Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Allenson, yes. Harpity?
Yes.
Excuse me, Fishbein?
I gotta say, I love this, this is like sitting back with my pina colada, waiting for you guys to vote, yes.
Laffin?
Yes.
Marone?
Yes, with no discussion.
Zandry?
Yes.
Tada?
Yes.
Testa?
Yes.
Chairman Savoni?
Yes, is that all nine of them?
Yeah, I don't know, the alphabetical order got changed. That must have been part of the motion, I don't know.
She put him, she put him where Morganstein was. Yep, okay, we need a motion on eleven.
Mr. Chairman, I move we go into executive session pursuant to Connecticut General State Statute's Section one dash two hundred and six D with respect to the purchase, sale, and/or leasing of property.
Second?
Moved and seconded, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, I declare the council in executive session, kindly clear the council chambers. Kindly clear the council chambers.